All right, welcome everyone to the Monday, November 4th, 2024 Liberty Lake City Council Meeting. This is our workshop session talking about the 2025 legislative priorities. The mayor will be joining us at seven o'clock and we have a lighthouse or a small gathering with us here in chambers. We'll take a quick roll call and then get into our conversation. Councilmember Kurtz.
President.
Councilmember Cargill's here, councilmember Spencer.
President.
Councilmember Kennedy.
President.
Anybody else online? Okay, we have a quorum of four, so we will proceed. And can we get a motion to excuse councilmembers Van Orman, Ball, and oh, councilmember Balls here? Councilmembers Van Orman and Dunn. We get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second, all right, it's been moving a second, all in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
All right, passes five zero, we will hope that they are able to join us for the seven o'clock. All right, Mark, all you for legislative priorities.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. So tonight is the kickoff conversation for the city councils drafting of the 2025 state legislative priorities. And just by way of reminder, the legislative session will begin on January 13th. This is a hundred and five day session, and so it'll go into whatever that is late April. And so we have an opportunity to kind of shape these priorities like we did last year. And I'll call your attention to the printout that should be in front of you that has the 2024 legislative priorities on it. We, in terms of the conversation, I think this year, especially at this preliminary workshop, can be more of a free flowing, just kind of stream of consciousness conversation, it'll have some structure around it. We want to try like we did last year to focus as much as we can on, on things that are aligned with our strategic priorities, but we're not going to structure the conversation, one priority, then go to the next priority like we did last year. That was, I don't think, the best way to have the conversation. And so the other couple of things that I'll mention, if you remember from the transparency workshop, we had talked based on the feedback that we had gotten from some of the audience members about having a workshop for residents, call it training, to learn more about legislative advocacy. And so we're planning to do that on either December the 10th or the 11th, depending on the council meeting schedule that is adopted going through the end of the year. And so we'll be putting that together, we're partnering with the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce to do that. We're hoping to have the three new legislative representatives at least attend and introduce themselves at that as well. And so that's something that staff is currently putting together, we'll get that on the calendar, so you've got it on your calendars. But this certainly will be a centerpiece, this, the finalized version of the legislative priorities, by that time will be a centerpiece of that conversation so that those folks that continue to be interested in that can have an actual list of those priorities that they may be helping to support. So, starting there, I would like to just kick off the conversation by reviewing a couple of items that staff has submitted. And some of these have come from various professional associations that they are affiliated with and are priorities of those associations. And so we can start from there and then just add on to that as we go. I'll also point out that it's been, I don't know, a month and a half or so ago, after the AWC board voted to finalize its legislative priorities for 2025, I forwarded that to you, so you should all have that document of all of the priorities from AWC. And then I'll say also that the GSI and the Greater Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce are both in the process of finalizing their agendas. And so the final versions of those aren't available yet. However, we do have access to the city of Spokane Valley's state agenda, and it's got an item on there that specifically is related to Liberty Lake, so I would propose, and we'll get to that in a minute, that we consider that for inclusion on the list that council ultimately adopts. So with that, I will just kind of throw out a couple of these, like I mentioned, that came from staff that we can discuss as adding or not, and then go from there. And the first one that I'll start with, and this is something that we've talked about numerous times in the past, but we want to make sure that we understand from council's perspective how to proceed with this. And that is the budget item that would be associated with the Department of Commerce's library grant for $937,000. And obviously, staff would recommend that we include that in the legislative priorities, but want to start the conversation with that item.
Just a note for the record, councilmember Dunn arrived. Hey, councilmember Dunn.
Hey, Mark, I support that idea strongly, actually, I think it's an important addition to what we've previously noted. It's a, an emphasis, it's the Department of Commerce granting process and including the grant that we've applied for.
Yeah, I'll just note that I wrote that down as well. So I'm trying to figure out how we go about putting that on as a priority, like what is the language, since they're kind of, it's a generic package that the legislature adopts, right? And that ours is hidden in that package essentially.
Yeah, so the, so I think the recommendation from staff is that we're supporting the budget recommendations that the Department of Commerce is making for its library, what is the specific name for the program? The Public Improvement Grant? Capital Improvement Grant, whatever the language would be, but that's what we would propose.
Good. Any other comments, thoughts, questions? Councilmember Kurtz, do you have anything?
No, I agree that whatever language we need to put in there to support that would be great.
Okay, any other comments on that one? The second one that we would propose for a council to consider is that there is a, and this, this is pretty universal, and I would expect for this to be on both the GSIs and the Greater Spokane Valley's list when they come out, is the general sense of declining infrastructure preservation dollars. And we need to be, I believe, we need to have a priority that's fairly strongly worded to support the increase and sustainability of those preservation dollars as we go forward, especially as, and we've had the conversations here, we're talking about a road infrastructure that continues to add lane miles. We have facilities, we have data, we have all of those things that we're going to need to preserve over time. And so that would be another item we would, staff would recommend adding as a priority.
Councilmember Ball.
Oh, so are you referring to, you know, widening I-90, is that?
So, so that's, that's a capital add, I would call it. So that is something that we definitely have on our list that was on our priorities from last year. If you refer to the 2024 list, and when we get there, I propose that we would re-up that one for inclusion on the 2025 list. What we're, what we're talking specifically about here is the state budget for preservation of existing infrastructure versus building new things.
Okay, okay, yeah, certainly, it would be nice.
Yeah, for sure.
Councilmember Dunn.
That's another one I think I have great, great support for, Mark. I'd want to try and recognize within the framework of the state's budget, specific, I'd say lines or places where there are projects in our, or near our jurisdiction. If it were possible to recognize from within, to bring, I'd say specificity. I always believe that when stating priorities, to be specific, provides greater emphasis. If it's possible to draw from the state's budget where there's sustaining, and I'm going to call it, you know, preservation of infrastructure specifically within our, or near our jurisdiction.
Yeah, and I'll just add on to this as well, I think it's important as well. I think where, where it gets sticky is if, if we, if we come out and say we support a certain funding mechanism to go along with that. I mean, everybody likes to fund, or likes to say they support things without having the funding mechanism established to it. But if we were to come out and say we support preservation funding, for lack of a better phrase, and want the state to do it via a gas tax or via a vehicle miles traveled tax, or whatever the case might be, I think that's where it kind of gets a little sticky. So are you suggesting, Mark, that it would not necessarily have a funding mechanism on it? It would just say for the support of preservation projects, or how were you thinking about it?
So ultimately, I think that would be, and what we want to hear from you consensus wise is whether you prefer to include something like that or not. But as an example, if I'm looking on the AWC legislative agenda, the language that is included there are things like advocate for direct and meaningful investments in traditional local infrastructure for operations and maintenance of aging systems, including expanded and reliable funding for the public works assistance account, that kind of language.
Yeah, councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would assume that the legislator would be their responsibility or duty to get into finding how it was going to be. I think what's important is that, I think it's important that we support that because I think it's absolutely common sense, and that is what we would want to do with our own city.
Yeah. Councilmembers Kurtz or Spencer? Good. So is the consensus of the council then to, let's go ahead and add that on there?
Yes.
Anybody opposed to that?
So, councilmember Dunn, with respect to the comment that you made, would we be specifying, not necessarily named projects, but projects that are, what was the phrase it used, adjacent or in the city limit or?
Near our jurisdiction.
Near our jurisdiction.
I say that, I'd say go Spokane County. I don't know that our state's budget has more resolution than that. But I'd look to support from perhaps our fourth district seat representatives to recognize what portions of the state's budget we may draw attention to. You know, they must be able to navigate that to some degree to allow us to say, and we see within this area are specifically sustaining and preservation infrastructure statements that we want to draw special attention to.
So maybe a statement with kind of supporter guidance from the fourth delegation, something like that, okay?
And did, Mark, when you read the, you read AWC?
Yes.
And they're specifically referring to the Public Works Trust Fund? Is that what you read?
Yes, so the end of that statement is including expanded and reliable funding for the Public Works Assistance Account.
Okay.
And then they have some other items that are, that, you know, it gets, it kind of goes from general to more specific, where they're calling out the CHIP program, and they're calling out REIT and some different things, but.
Councilmember Kennedy.
I think Councilman Dunn's comment about within the Spokane County area has strong importance. We can put some sort of reading in that. Is that what you, Councilman Dunn?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean to draw attention to our jurisdiction or where there is impact near, near our jurisdiction. It is good to make an appeal, I call it, for the preservation of infrastructure. It's great to say we see that there is a budget language calling for preservation specifically, through, and try to bring attention to that.
And now would be a good time, I should have said this at the outset, the, tonight is a preliminary conversation, right? We're not, we're not codifying a document tonight, we at some point will bring back all of these once consensus is formed by way of resolution, but tonight's just a workshop.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
With that spirit in mind, Mark, I wonder if you might be able to give us a little bit of insight? If so, if we were going to go with councilmember Dunn's perspective, maybe as you said, AWC is more general and then gets more specific, maybe we could do a such as for some projects that, you know, something that the city feels like needs to be maintained in the Spokane area, like we could maybe call out a couple of projects. I don't know what other people think about that, but I like the idea of being general about wanting to have the long term and like the strategic maintenance of things. But I do like also being a little bit more specific about some of the projects so that that piques some people's interest or it resonates with people, or it's an idea that people have when they're looking at the budget and deciding votes later in the process.
Absolutely, and we can, we can search for some language that would accomplish that while not limiting our priority to a specific thing as a all or nothing type of statement. Any other comments on the preservation piece? And we, we'll refine these as we go, obviously. The next one that I want to call your attention to is regional flexibility for Growth Management Act implementation. This is one that we talked about last year, but when you look at just the variation of the communities across the state and the fact that the GMA requires all planning to be done within the confines of this, this specific policy, there are some limitations that hamper development in reasonable ways that may be better suited here versus somewhere on the other side of the state, or somewhere on the other side of the state versus here. And so there's been a lot of talk at all levels of government in the state about this gained flexibility. And so we would, we would recommend again that this would be less specific to a, to a thing, right? Like not saying the housing calculations be done differently or the econ, I mean, the environmental resilience being done differently, but just a general flexibility within the GMA so that regions or even specific municipalities can implement with more flexibility for conditions that are local to those municipalities.
Yes, councilmember Dunn.
Yeah, I agree hardly with that one, and it's very apropos or timely for our work on a comp plan.
Absolutely.
So, and in this, I do actually respond to your perception of not being eternally specific. The reference to flexibility, I think, provides enough emphasis for us. We will encounter, I'm confident, several places where flexibility would be helpful. I can't say we would be able to iterate them right now.
Yeah, I will, I will just add on that, I agree a hundred percent, the flexibility word to me is the most important word of that sentence. So, because every state, or excuse me, every city is going to do it differently, every city is going to have different challenges. So if they, if there's flexibility in the GMA, that would sure make the job a lot easier.
Okay, so for now, we're, that's a question, we didn't hear from everybody, but for now, it sounds like we're okay with just a general flexibility and implementation of the GS, GMA for regional or municipal conditions.
Yep, councilmember.
Yeah, I would agree with that, but I'm also curious as to whether there should be some sort of mechanism to appeal, you know, the, the way it's currently structured in order to get that flexibility because, you know, housing density, accessory dwellings, that just isn't going to fly in our city as far as I can see, but.
Short of, short of putting on here repeal it, altogether, we're kind of stuck in what we have, right?
I mean, in some senses, yes. And this, the flexibility that we're talking about here is more in the, on the implementation side. And so I can see some additional justification for wanting to kind of whittle down and get more specific on if there are certain things that are pain points for us, we might want to call those out, and I'm going to introduce one here in a minute that's not specifically GMA related, but it's comp plan related. But, but yes, I, so as an example, on the ADU side, right? You would not, just using that as an example, you would not, you would not expect to see the same level of, say, ADU implementation in a less dense area than you would expect to see it in a more dense area. And so forcing every municipality to do it exactly the same way isn't going to get the state where it needs to be. So that's where the flexibility comes in, so that you can tailor it to the needs of the community that you're in. And I think that's what we're trying to derive versus maybe stripping things out or, and you weren't suggesting necessarily that our priority should be repeal, right?
Well, if it were me, I might say that, but overall, I'm just saying, short of saying something like that, there are only so many things that we can ask for
Right.
in, in flexibility or changes to how it's implemented or how cities have to deal with it.
Is Evan, is Lisa on, can you tell? Lisa, are there any suggestions that you have that have come out of not only the most recent round of comp planning, but just in general, as you've been dealing with the GMA?
So, we haven't had the opportunity to have those conversations yet with Planning Commission. In fact, at our meeting in November, we will be reviewing all the required amendments. I'd like to be able to circle back and give you some more specifics with it. What I can do is I can certainly share with city council the summary of, a summary of the required amendments that we're going to need to do before we get there. I don't think a lot of them, like the ADU thing, I don't think is going to have a lot of an impact here in Liberty Lake, in part because we tend to have smaller lots and the, the areas where we do have larger lots, we have larger lots because of, because of excessive slopes, and they're topographically challenged and there's areas where we have greater than 30% slope. We also have, we have issues with rock outcrops, et cetera, that make development particularly challenging in those areas. And again, we see that in Legacy Ridge, we see that also with the Bella Lago development and areas like that. Again, as I said, I think that I'll have a better feel for the Planning Commission's reaction when we go over this in November. And I'd like to be able to circle back with you and be able to share with you some of what their concerns are. But for now, I can certainly share with you the summary that's going out to Planning Commission, actually, tonight for that meeting in November, if that would be helpful.
And I think to Lisa's point, you would, you would expect to see that regardless of what we're talking about, the issue that we're, we're talking about, right? Because those same challenges may not be in place for a community like Airway Heights. And as you go across the 281 cities, you would expect for there to be differences. And leading back to the original point, we're, we're asking for flexibility to match our local conditions versus being forced into this template that may or may not apply.
Any other, Councilmember Ball?
Excuse me, Mark, what would, like, for example, we don't have shoreline issues, so is that something that we would, that would fall under this?
So I'm going to let Lisa address that, we, you're correct, we don't have shoreline issues, and that's one of the elements in comprehensive planning that we're not going to, it's not going to be part of our plan because we don't have it, but Lisa, do you want to address how that may affect the flexibility question?
Yeah, absolutely, and this is one that we've had, we've had, we've asked a question numerous times to ecology and to commerce, and I still have not gotten an answer on it. Since we don't have shorelines, do we have to adopt a shoreline master plan? Do, or can we simply, do we need to adopt the county's shoreline regulations by reference? That's a great question, and we will be digging into that this time again as we get into an assessment of our critical area ordinances. We may need to make a few tweaks. At the end of the day, if we need to, we can certainly adopt the county's shoreline regulations by reference. But there, but, but we shouldn't be required to do that, and I have yet to get ecology or commerce to acknowledge the fact that it doesn't apply to the city of Liberty Lake because we have no shorelines. And it's interesting because Amy worked in another jurisdiction in central Washington where she also didn't have any shorelines, and ecology in that region was willing to give her a carte blanche of, no, of course it doesn't apply. But again, but again, the eastern region is not willing to give us the same, put the same thing in writing. So that's a great example.
Probably because we have lake in our name.
Lisa, Dan, quick question and trivia maybe. To refer to shoreline, our city's corporate boundaries do not extend to the actual riverbank. It looks like they actually conclude at the state park Centennial Trail, is that right?
That is correct, that is correct, but there are a few areas where the riparian buffer actually does extend into our city. And so, so there are a couple, a few places where we're within the 250 feet. And so we do have shoreline regulations as it relates to the riparian buffer.
I just like to talk, you know, Linda, for me, I like talking to people about that, where shoreline, the river, but not really.
And then the specific item that we would recommend related to the comp plan is, and I'm talking to add to our legislative priorities, is to push the deadline for the completion of our comp plan from June 30th of 2026 to December 31st of 2026. And if you'll remember last session, as some of the West Side counties had their deadlines, you'll remember that this was a common practice where they were pushing from June 30th to December 31st. And that gives us a little bit of extra flexibility to implement those, those pieces with an extra couple of months in the year without having to do that by June 30th. And so that would be the recommendation for, for that priority.
Quick question on that, Mark, does that take legislative approval?
It does.
Okay.
If I may? So the other, so we are the third cycle of these periodic updates, the first two were approved for that additional six months. And the Steering Committee of Elected Officials is going to be discussing this at their November meeting about all of our jurisdictions requesting this. So I think that, that we will be in good company because everyone is feeling the crunch in trying to get this over the finish line by June 30th.
And, and the, the other thing that I neglected to point out is that there are certain decisions that are beyond our individual control that we're relying on that are made at the county level that aren't happening as timely as we would like them. And so this would give us, and to Lisa's point, this is going to be one of many cities that are recommending this in, in our counties grouping. And so this just adds a couple of extra months flexibility for us.
Anybody opposed to that?
No, that's great.
All right, I would suggest as a next step, that concludes the list of items that staff had to bring forward. As a next step, I suggest we might look and go down the 2024 list of priorities and decide whether any of these are still relevant enough to include on the 2025 list, if they've expired, if we want to amend some of them, and then we can move on to others that are new ones. And so if we start from top to bottom, if you've got this in front of you, as you can see, we've got bolstering cities' ability to recruit and retain law enforcement officers. This again is one of the top priorities on the AWC list. And we've had several conversations even in our budget discussions this year to address this. Anybody have any strong feelings?
Yeah, I think this one's good to stay. Agreed.
I agree.
Any other comments? Looks like that one.
Perfect question.
Yeah.
Looking down at protective privacy and reducing costs associated with body worn and dash cameras. How could we touch on that? I know what it is. Is there a concern? Is there a concern of privacy? With that?
So let's see, this is number four. Oh, number four, there we go. There was a, so this, that item came directly from the AWC recommendations from last year. And so there, there was, there have been several cases that have come, that have caused some issues with respect to privacy, particularly as it pertains to records retention and the cost. um, and the cost associated with providing this data on request as a public record. That's that's where that is focused.
Thank you. I understand.
To me, you know, just looking ahead, a- all five of these are still very much relevant. Um, I don't think any of them have gone away. So I I would be in favor of of keeping all of them on there.
And and Mayor Protim, you're referring specifically to the ones listed under public safety.
Correct. Okay. Yep. So the second one is providing additional funding for local alternative response programs. Third is helping to curb organized retail theft. Fourth is protecting privacy and reducing costs associated with body worn and dash cameras. And fifth is creating greater access to behavioral health services.
And one thing, uh, sorry, I didn't see your hand go. One thing that I'd I'd like to point out that um, some of the prevailing discussion on this, and if you remember, I was on the AWC State Legislative Committee. Um, and the mayor is on the federal committee for AWC. This, in addition to being a hot topic at the state level, needs also to be a federal priority. And so I would recommend that we also encourage the mayor to put this on her list of things that she wants to bring to AWC's federal committee um, as well.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, Member Protim. I'm curious, um, does the staff have any things that are, they feel that should be considered be added to this list?
Is the chief on, uh, Evan? Chief Simmons, are there any legislative priorities maybe coming out of WASPIC that uh, you would recommend adding to this list?
You know, in a couple of weeks, we have our WASPIC conference and uh, I plan on attending that uh, legislative session. So I can get back to the council on that if it's not too late. But nothing that's come across my desk that's pressing um, at this time from WASPIC. That you haven't mentioned, that is.
Thank you.
There, I I will say, um, last session, there was a bill that was actually sponsored by Senator Patton. Basically putting some um, specifics in place for chronic uh, retail uh, theft or property crime.
Yeah.
People who were convicted of property crimes. So, you know, if you X, i- if X was the number, there was a mandatory sentencing of whatever it was, and I don't remember the specifics. But that was a Senator Patton introduced bill, um, and it went down last session. Meaning it didn't pass last.
That really kind of comes into play if we have item number three, helping to curb organized retail theft.
So I'm not suggesting that that be on the list, but that's an example of one of the things that was circulating last last session.
And part of the reason why we added it to this list is because we got, um, if I remember correctly, we got reports that Home Depot specifically was dealing with all sorts of people was walking out without paying.
If if you look at the numbers, and there's a lot of debate about the numbers as they converted over from the old system to the new reporting system. But property crime in particular is surging nationwide, right? It's surging more on the West Coast than it is in other places, but it's surging nationwide.
Councilmember Ball?
So when you're talking about uh, the mayor bringing these to the federal, um, was it federal?
For the, and and I was talking specifically about the curbing organized retail theft. But yeah, she's on the committee to form the federal legislative priorities for AWC.
Okay, so you wanted to bring all of these five points up?
I I was only specifically talking about helping to curb organized retail theft. That doesn't mean that we can't recommend others go as well, but that one in particular. Because it's a nationwide issue that really needs some congressional attention.
So is this retail theft in Liberty Lake organized, or is it just bad guys going in and stealing stuff?
Darren, chief?
Yeah, we we do see quite a uh, quite a few um, cases where um, through an investigation, we're able to tie um, the suspects to additional thefts throughout our county and sometimes throughout the nation. Um, so um, I would say, um, and I'm not gonna put a number on it, but anecdotally uh, speaking, uh, you know, keeping up with those cases with our detectives, that we do see quite a few that are, it's probable or it's reasonable to say that they are a part of an organized retail theft ring of some sort. Um, and we have several of those cases going now.
Come on up. Come on up. So in part, this is fueling the 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 drug
Yeah.
problem that we're having.
Means that they've had more than one instance where they've had retail theft, where they've gone into one store and then gone into another store. That's how you can come out with organized retail theft. So that's how it's it's not necessarily a gang, if you will, of all people going and doing things, but they do operate that way. It's just that that individual that is charged with that crime has been also charged with another crime of theft in another organization or place. And also depending on the value of the property as well.
Okay.
Councilmember Kennedy?
I found it interesting, uh, some time ago, having a conversation with the manager of Home Depot where they were experiencing some thefts there. And he he shared one bit of information. He said, because of the safety of their employees, their policy is if I go in and grab grab something, I'm heading out the parking lot, you don't, you don't stop. You don't lay a hand on them. You try to look at to get their license plate number or something like that. There's nothing there. So what he was saying that corporate had advised him is that they see that the amount of theft is increasing because of that. So they were trying to be more conscientious to look at the individuals who are leaving their vehicles, things that sort there. So to correct one challenge, created another one.
Yep. Anything else um, on public safety and well-being? Councilmember Kurtz, anything you want to add or subtract here?
No, I like um, leaving them all on as long, I mean, it sounded like the chief supported that too. So um, it sounded like we had some good priorities and and sticking with them seems good, like a good idea.
And and also, uh, it sounds like the chief is going to, from his WASPIC conference, possibly bring back some additional ones that we need to consider. So we'll wait for those.
Okay. Economic vitality and opportunity. Anything you want to add or um, recommends uh, subtracting from this one, Mark?
Not from staff.
Okay. Anybody, uh, councilmember Dan?
I think that the, well, granted, this isn't a um, last meeting on this topic. But the second bullet point regarding low carbon fuel standard or carbon tax will be resolved by the voters shortly.
Right.
I think that following our election, we can remove that line.
Absolutely.
So do we have consensus on removing that one? Which is the second bullet point under economic vitality and opportunity?
Anybody?
Was this a motion?
No, we're just going through the
Oh.
the list right now.
And so there's been a lot of talk, uh, and I'm going now down to the second bullet under the title or heading, support continued funding for the land purchase uh, and construction of the National Guard Readiness Center. I don't know if any of you all rec- uh, remember the conversation, but when the um, appraisal of the two pieces of property that were in question came back, they were uh, unequally lopsided, right? And so this one's going to require a lot of additional work. And so I'm not suggesting that we move it. It's just a recognition that this is outside of the legislative process. So this one, uh, I I don't recommend removing, but just an acknowledgement that there's a lot of additional work that's gonna have to take place for this one to to continue to move forward.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Question, uh, how did that come about to to begin with then?
The the whole.
Legislature to help us?
Yeah, so.
Readiness Center here?
So going back, and I don't remember the exact date, um, several years ago, there was a letter that was co-authored by several senators from the fourth. What what is Andy Billick's district? Is that the third? The third and the ninth that said that they supported the proposition of using the DNR property right over here next to
Okay.
just west of G for this purpose. And so that's where it started. And the conversation has continued from there with a lot of additional people involved in it. But there was actually a an appraisal done of not only that property, but the property at the airport, and they were wildly lopsided, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, councilmember Ball?
When you say wild wildly op- um, opposite or whatever, wh- which one was worth more?
This one here was appraised at something like seven point four million, and the other one was in the hundreds of thousands or something like that. It was, it was not even close. And so obviously, something would have to be done differently for that exchange to occur. That was the issue, is that they were proposing maybe an exchange.
Where is it precisely? It's west of what?
So if you, yeah, if you look at the the map where the George G dealerships are, it's just to the west of that. Yeah, that's, it's a big. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and it's on by the DNR?
Yes.
Anything else under economic vitality and opportunity? Going once, going twice.
So
Alright.
This is, this is a suggestion to consider, not a recommendation. There's been a lot of talk about um, the, uh, especially with the affordability question as it pertains to housing. The corporate ownership of single-family housing. Some cities are taking specific measures to, and some states are considering specific measures to ban corporations of certain sizes from owning single-family residential properties. That's gotten a lot of traction um, across the country, so I'm just throwing that out there for consideration.
I absolutely agree with that.
That one really resonates with me as well. Um, I recognize uh, investment, I call it, invest uh, investor owned property as a driver in cost of living and um, um, the cost of residential property ownership. So to state that as an objective, we're just trying to get words to try and properly resolve that. Yet there was uh, at the state level, uh, initiative to try and create such action. Um, I definitely want to support it.
And and I will say, that specific item fell uh, short of making the final list of call them the top five AWC priorities. But I want to say it's still on the, like, what 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 is the next level of support that they have? Issues that are significant is what they call it. Just as a.
Councilmember Ball?
Well, yeah, I agree with that because it opens the door for short-term rentals, you know, for people doing Airbnbs and whatnot. And that could, you know, get in the way of people getting a unaffordable home to rent.
My interpretation then is that it it actually precludes ownership. It moves to rental.
Yeah.
Otherwise would be owned properties. So that that I think is the biggest driver.
Right. But I mean, yeah, the the short-term rental thing is causing problems in a lot of bigger cities.
Now, for clarity, I believe that uh, we in the city of Liberty Lake um, have a specific wording and ordinance regarding short-term rental. Lisa, do you want to clarify that? Trying to recount myself.
Yes, we absolutely do not allow short-term rental. And it's um, because it's, it's not a use that specifically dis- defined within the um, development code. The closest example um, of it would be like a hotel motel or a um, or a bed and breakfast. And a bed and breakfast requires a conditional use permit. And um, a hotel motel is not allowed in residential zones. So we have no allowance for it anywhere. It is a commercial venture, and therefore it is prohibited. We will, in our development code, as we update our development code in this, that is one that we have noted that we want to actually call out as an outright not permitted use. But if it's not in the um, if it's not in the um, zoning matrix, um, and it, there's not a comparable use that it can be aligned to, it's specifically not permitted. And so that, we have been very solid on that interpretation, um, and we do enforce on that.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Thanks, Lisa. Th- this issue came up several years ago with the HOA locally, where we got about fourteen hundred homes in, that they wanted to make sure that these types of businesses were not allowed in there. But the question really came up is that who and how do you police it? So I guess we can have an ordinance saying that can't be done, but are we set up to be able to police that?
So I I will say that we do um, enforce on this when we get complaints. And we got a complaint today as an example, and we went on the, part of the documentation is to go on the site. And um, our new code enforcement specialist found three others that were listed on the site. And we'll be enforcing on those now that we have a code enforcement officer, we can, or or um, a specialist, we can be more proactive about that. But yes, we do. As soon as we get a complaint on it, we're right on it. And we have had great success in enforcing on this.
One thing that came up in our meetings with the HOA was to let all the HOAs know this policy. Because we are in the best position to know what's happening in our neighborhood. So I think if if we, I I'm sure we're probably doing that now, maybe working with the HOA to let them know what those rules or regulations are. And they can share that with their residents.
Do, Mark, is there any way for us to know right now if there are properties owned in the city by giant corporate entities?
We could, I I don't know if there's a um, prescribed way to know that. We could, we could maybe work with the assessor's office to figure out.
I mean, it just seems to me this, this is kind of a slippery slope. Because if we say, if we put something on here that says, you know, we support state legislation to prevent corporate entities from owning homes, okay? How large of a corporate entity?
Right.
And then who gets to police that, uh, to Councilmember Kennedy's point? Is it the city that polices that? Is the state that polices that? And then, uh, I mean, what are what are the other requirements other than just a corporate entity that we're gonna put on there uh, to define what a corporate entity is?
And and those would be uh, things that we would need to follow up and and massage here, right? Versus, because the the nuances that you're describing are are extremely important. Um, and and we could, uh, so the recommendation, I think, would be for that to be not a local ordinance, right? But to support a state law that would have some limitations on the um, hedge fund ownership, corporate ownership of single-family residential homes. And so we could do some research to maybe narrow down some language to propose at the follow-up session. But to your point, that's gonna have to be
Yeah, I mean.
Gone through.
To to me, I'd 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 like to see the language first, and and then I'd also like to try to figure out exactly how we go about defining what that is.
Sure.
Because, a- and 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 to the the first point I brought up is whether it even impacts our city, if this is an issue in our city or not. Are we just talking about a statewide?
So we can do some research to find out if we can determine um, on the appraisal rules, if that's even.
I'm not sure that it is.
And then outside of that, uh, can propose some potential language for uh, state level state-level law, because again, we would not be proposing this as a city ordinance.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing before we move off of economic vitality, if you recall from the last session, there was some successful legislation that was proposed regarding condo reform. That's not something that we specifically call out here. But it's one of those uh, items that um, it, we believe has some traction now that those laws were successfully passed from the last session, and the, and and two of those came from Senator Patton. Is that something that the council wants to consider supporting more of condo reform I'm talking about?
I would voice uh, yes, specifically any action that can improve the opportunity for ownership over rental. To me, creates stronger communities. So.
So maybe not necessarily condo reforms specifically, but but just things that promote ownership versus rental.
Generally speaking, condominium refers to owned property rather than rental property. So yeah, those are my words.
You know, I I I I agree completely, and we're having this conversation about housing affordability um, and building code requirements. That's number three on the supporting legislation as well. And I think we need to make it clear that some of the things that are being passed are making it more expensive to own a home.
A hundred percent.
To get into a home. So the more regulations that we put on in place sometimes, the more that it can cost a homeowner. Or, yeah, Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, I would be very supportive of that. Um, just today, Betty and I, w- we just have a house a couple doors down from, just went on. Uh, I would be very supportive of that. Um, just today, Betty and I, we, we just have a house a couple of doors down from, just went on the market. And Betty and I were talking, we've talked, we had this conversation many times is that for us to downsize and want to continue to live in the city of Liberty Lake, there is nothing for us to downsize to. We could downsize to something less square footage, end up selling our house and pay this about the same amount of money for something that's smaller. So, and I, I repeatedly said is that if there is no condos that would be attractive to Betty and I to move to, we are stymied to work. We will stay where we are. When that happens, suddenly we're not opening up the market to be able to move down and allows a family of four or five to step up. So yeah, I'm very supportive of having that within the city.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I just want to echo my support too, as a former condo dweller. Um, the condo launched me into the house I have here now. So whether you're going up or down, um, condos are a good way for people to get into first-time homeownership or, um, like councilmember Kennedy said, to downsize if you're.
Right.
Needing to.
So it sounds like.
Condos.
So it sounds like we specifically want to call out additional condo reform to make homeownership more accessible.
Yeah. And a condo can also be a townhouse style.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
So I was thinking, um, when we were talking about the corporate ownership and then also with this topic about the condo pieces of that, that maybe, um, one of our broader goals would be around housing affordability. And then giving some specific examples with like, sort of like the such as condo reform or giving some of those examples of how that might be achieved. Um, but just setting our intention, um, that we were focused on, um, housing affordability for, um, you know, young, like Linda was saying, young people, um, who are trying to go with their first home. Um, like Mike was saying, um, people who are wanting to downsize and stay in our community. Um, but just setting that intention that it's about the affordability of the housing and those other pieces play into it. The, the part about the condos and the part about, um, the corporate ownership. Um, I guess we basically want people to be able to stay in our community. Um, and, and maybe that, there's a way to sort of word that, um, with some, there's a way to word that better, I guess, that Mark and crew will probably figure out.
We can definitely work on that.
All right. We have about, uh, four minutes, five minutes left here, Mark, for, uh, planned growth and infrastructure.
And two of these, we've already talked about the, the first two bullets. Um, and so we've got good direction on those. And councilmember Ball, the, the, the third bullet there was the one that you were asking about earlier. So, uh, do we want to leave that on the list? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Lisa, is there any update? And I know we want to leave it on the list or we would propose to leave it on the list. But is there any update that you can provide quickly on the sub-area transportation plan?
Um, yes, I can. So we have had a kickoff meeting and we have, uh, all the jurisdictions involved have been sharing data with Fair and Peers, the consultant. Um, they will be scheduling another meeting, I believe in the near future. Um, but in the meantime, uh, the, uh, work is progressing. And right now, the, the timeline, though it's a bit aggressive, is they're hoping to, um, complete the analysis by early in, uh, twenty twenty-five. I think they were shooting for February. It may slip a little bit, but, um, but it, the, the, it, it's definitely in process.
And so what that means is that the project timeline that Lisa just described is related to this South Barker Road corridor project. Um, and I would also point out that that one is specifically called out on the city of Spokane Valley's legislative priorities. So, um, the combination of it being on ours and theirs, I think gives it the, uh, proper weight. And I would say between now and the time we come back, uh, for the next council meeting with a follow-up, uh, workshop, just to refine this list down to its final form. If there are items that you run into and like we heard from the chief going to WASPIC and Lisa having a discussion with planning commission, that you want us to consider adding to this, let us know. We can discuss them at the workshop, but, but maybe send them to us via email so that we can be prepared to add those for the next discussion.
One other thing I'll just, uh, mention, you know, and, and maybe we do this, um, in, in how we word it, but we have a lot of things that we support on here, but we don't necessarily have anything we oppose. So we might want to just think about that, uh, to see if there's anything that we want to add on here that is, uh, something that we oppose as well.
It's a good point. Like unfunded mandates.
That's one. Yes. Anything else, Mark, on that?
No, I think we're out of time. Mayor Protem.
All right. Uh, we'll adjourn until the seven o'clock meeting.
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Monday, November fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, city council meeting. Thanks to everybody for being flexible with tomorrow night being election night. Um, we have the ability to, to move our meetings around because I know everybody has their own plans for that. So welcome. I will start by saying we're having some connectivity issues. So I cannot see who's on screen and I know councilmember Kurtz is joining online. I think councilmember Cargill is, is he back on or he will be? Okay. Um, so I'm going to have a little bit of difficulty calling on people who are remote, but we will do our best. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and start, um, oh, invocation. I forgot to ask somebody. So I guess I'll do it. So I'll start the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. So please join me.
Dear Father, thank you for blessing all of us with this free country we live in. Bless us and guide us through the next few weeks. And as things unfold here in our country and please bring peace among everybody. Uh, we all have more in common than we have differences. So let everybody remember that. I want to thank, thank our first responders, law enforcement, fire, first military for always being there for us to protect us and protect our rights. Please watch over us tonight as we deliberate our city's business and please make sure that we keep our, our thoughts and remarks thoughtful and respectful as we go about the evening. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, you know, I'm not even seeing my own hotspot. So that's interesting. Okay. Um, so go ahead and call to order those online. Just make sure your, uh, councilmembers who are online, make sure your volume is, uh, that you're unmuted. So I can hear your responses. Um, I know, I believe, um, councilmember Van Norman is not with us tonight. We'll ask for an excusal for her later. Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Uh, councilmember Cargill. I think he'll be joining us later, um, remotely. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
All right. Do we have an ex- uh, excuse, motion to excuse councilmember Van Norman and Cargill? And when councilmember Cargill rejoins us, we'll note that.
Uh, move to excuse councilmembers Van Norman and Cargill.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second, uh, by councilmember Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Yes, that would be five zero. All right. Um, we are up to agenda approval. So we are without our mayor pro tem. So if somebody, uh, are there any, um, requested changes to the agenda? I'll just, I'll start there. Councilmember Dunn.
Um, Madam Mayor, I move the agenda as presented.
Fine. Um, so that's been, been moved. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, so if we, if you have something you want to move later. Um, all right. So those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Well, I have an amendment.
Okay. So that, that's the challenge. We.
Right.
Kind of jumped.
I apologize. I'm sorry. No, that's, that, you raised your hand. Sorry. You were before I, it's not a problem.
Okay. So I'm struggling. That's, that's problem with me going in order sometimes.
I could easily forego what I was.
Okay. Okay. Or, or if we get to it later.
Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So those in favor, I apologize. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes five zero. We have an, we have an approval. So that brings us up to citizen comments already. So if there's anybody here, um, in chambers who would like to make a citizen comment, we have our yellow half sheets over on the table. Please fill that out and get it to Kyle at the end of the table. And if there's anybody online who'd like to make a citizen comment, please send a note in chat to our, um, meeting host and he will let me know. And if we do have somebody online, I will go through the comment rules and if we don't, I'll save that for later. Do you have anybody? Okay. Um, name? Oh, that's probably, I probably know who that is. So M S, if you would please, uh, go ahead. And just a reminder that there's a three-minute limit, um, and, uh, please keep comments respectful and, um, if you can't see it, uh, I will, I, uh, if you can't see the timer from where you are, I will keep, keep a timer and I will give a heads up when there's fifteen seconds left. Go ahead.
Mayor, this is councilmember Cargill.
Oh, okay.
I don't have anything more to say.
Okay. Thank you. I thought maybe that was Mark Saba joining us. So, okay. No more citizen comments. So we can start calling councilmember Cargill Ms. Going forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure why it says that.
Okay. Thank you again. And, and councilmember Cargill, just like councilmember Kurtz, uh, we're still having some difficulties here. So, um, I'm, I'm going to do my best to call on the two of you remotely, but if I do miss you, please feel free to, to speak up. All right. So announcements, proclamations and special presentations, we have none. Um, reports and inquiries. We'll start off with city council. Are there any city council reports? Councilmember Dunn.
Um, quick notes for S T A. I believe we all saw a spokesman article this morning covering land acquisition in Spokane Valley. Um, that, um, just as a reminder, uh, Spokane S T A's Connect twenty thirty-five strategic, um, comp plan, I call it. Their version of, uh, comp plan for that agency, uh, includes a clean energy campus. I'm not connecting these two events specifically, but it's just kind of an interesting trivia story to say that, um, in the current boon campus for S T A, uh, housing forty-five battery electric buses that it does, uh, they have not outstripped the land available as much as the power of Vista is able to supply to that location. So the ability to go on and provide bus services now will be, uh, to find a new clean energy campus location to support, uh, with supporting electrical power. Um, anyway, yeah, the location is to be determined, but that lies ahead for S T A.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any other council? Go ahead. Councilmember Ball.
Oh, I just wanted, I, it seems like it was months ago, but it was just a couple of weeks ago and they had the, um, opening of the hub's new fields. And I know Mayor Kaminski was there. I was there. I think Mindy was there, a few other people. Anyway, it was pretty interesting. It was fun. Um, that turf, I don't know. It's made out of recycled material. Really nice. It's really, um, soft. Um, Phil was saying that it would, you know, uh, help people from not getting hurt when they fall and whatnot. So it was pretty cool. So that was it. And also I did read that article this morning, Dan, about S T A. Are they going to acquire that parcel? Do you think or?
Uh, yeah, there's a ton of due diligence in process.
Okay.
So.
Good spot.
Yeah, I know exactly where it is.
Okay. Um, any, uh, councilmember Kurtz or councilmember Cargill, any council reports from you?
No.
Okay.
Let's, Mayor, just go.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Um, I, I wasn't on in time to, uh, address this, but I, I do think in the future it'd be good if we can approve the, uh, names to the different commissions separately as opposed to all at once. Um, I'm not going to be voting against, uh, any of the commission appointments, but I, I did want to make a comment, uh, regarding one of the commission appointments. Uh, and some of the things that was said by this person at previous council meetings. So, um, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, okay. Uh, with my report, I'll make it short. Um, lots of meetings coming up. We're getting to, um, annual meetings for different, uh, boards and commissions. We have the G S I economic forecast Wednesday morning, the Spokane, Greater Spokane Valley Chamber Annual Meeting on Thursday. Um, I got, I was invited to participate Thursday midday, uh, at the Leadership Spokane Governance Day. So I'm on one of their panels for that. Um, so that'll be interesting. I don't have any topics, so shine and do my best. Um, lots of really great people, um, in the lineup. There's several different panels scheduled for that day. Um, uh, Government Action Committee for Valley Chamber coming up. Um, and, and S R T C coming up and also our, um, Spokane County Elected Officials Meeting, which is the, uh, committee that's goes, that is discussing the G M A and all of that. So, um, for Library Board of Trustee interviews on Thursday as well. So busy week. That's all I've got. Um, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I can draw your attention to the printed report on the events and reminders. As the mayor mentioned before, tomorrow is the federal election day. We've got state races and locals on there as well. But you still have time to register to vote and to vote tomorrow. So if you're interested in doing that, uh, go to vote.gov and it will give you all of the information that you need to find your, um, registration spot and your polling place. November eleventh, which is next Monday is Veterans Day. So city hall and library, excuse me, will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Um, the following day, Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, is our next scheduled special city council meeting to continue the conversation that we started last week on the budget. Uh, that will be here, uh, in the council chamber in a workshop starting at six P M. Um, and then looking out a little farther, November the twenty-third is the opening ceremony for the Winter Glow Spectacular. And that will take place at Orchard Park beginning at five P M. And there are, uh, a couple of dates that, uh, I believe are on some of the social media advertisements that you can, they are still looking for volunteers. And so if you're interested in volunteering to help set up the display, um, find those advertisements and follow the contact information. And they will be glad to tell you how to volunteer to help them get this set up for the opening ceremony. Um, and then a new event this year, which is exciting, uh, the Liberty Lake Better Together Foundation is sponsoring a tree lighting that's going to take place out, uh, in the Trailhead parking lot, thereabouts, um, on December first at five P M. Um, and so if you're interested in seeing this new tree being placed and lit, uh, come out and join, uh, on December the first at five P M. Um, and then finally on the reminders, uh, and the Liberty Lake Southern Water District may address this when they, uh, provide their report. But just as a precursor to that, Leaf and Beach is going on and it will be going on through December the second. As the leaves continue to fall off the trees, this is your opportunity to bag them up, bring them out to the Liberty Lake Southern Water District property and, uh, and, and open them and, and have them mulched out there in that open area behind the district, uh, plant. Um, before we move on to the other items, are there any questions about the reminders? Yes, sir.
I do have a course in on E, the, the lighting. Some, some years ago, we, we used to have a ceremony that we would have this tree out here lit up. That kind of went by the wayside on it. Is there a possibility that we could look to maybe going back to that at some point?
The, uh, this is kind of, um, the re, hopefully the replacement going forward. So we're looking at putting the tree, I believe it's a fourteen-foot steel tree. Um, being in the parking lot right above the reader board. So it'll be a little bit, it'll be viewable by more people. And so they're working on getting, um, the choir there from the high, high school, just like very similar to what we used to do. So looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to turn over, it says, uh, Hardy, but Kyle's going to fill in on this, uh, and provide the quarter three donation report. Kyle.
So, uh, for the third quarter, we had four donations and I believe we have a sheet for everybody, uh, in front of you. But I will just call out, uh, two pickleball nets with an estimated value of two thousand dollars. Uh, donor was Liberty Lake Pickleball Group for use at Orchard Park. Uh, we had a memorial bench donated, uh, back in July for two thousand dollars, uh, by Joni Buck, uh, for the memorial bench along the walking path. And then we had two anonymous donations, uh, to P D. One for coffee and donuts and then one for donuts and coffee.
Thank you.
Is there a difference when the donuts are first or?
That's a great question.
I guess it depends on where the donuts come from.
Thank you, Kyle. Um, and as you've all seen and probably heard, we have an ongoing project out at, uh, Appleway. Uh, and it involves the intersection of Country Vista as well. And so I'm going to ask Ben to, uh, give you a brief project update there. Ben?
Sure. Thanks, Mark. Uh, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Uh, just a quick update on the Appleway Country Vista project. We are entering the final phase of a project, uh, the project. So in this, the next week or so, we'll be completing the, uh, the new pavement overlay, all the new striping, uh, completing the Country Vista intersection, which has been torn up for a while. Uh, we're going to, they're, they're installing a shared use path on the south side, uh, where the bike lane kind of converges in there and then completing all the ADA curbs. That's going to happen over the next week. Uh, starting tomorrow, there will only be single-use traffic with flaggers. So there's going to be. Starting tomorrow, there will only be single-use traffic with flaggers. So there's going to be, the traffic's going to be, you think, you thought it was bad before, it's going to be much worse starting tomorrow because they are only going to be able to use one lane in both directions. So there'll be flaggers on either end. That whole song and dance where they keep people in line, let one direction go, then they let the other direction go. That is starting tomorrow because they've got to do some additional subsurface work before they can put the final paving course back on, starting Thursday. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they'll be putting the new paving on, and then the project will be completed shortly after Veterans Day.
Right. Well, I want to say thank you to all the people who live in Rocky Hill, because they've been, I know we've had, we've had some naysayers on some social media, but overall, I haven't heard much from everybody in Rocky Hill who's had to, I know that's where you are, who have had to take that detour. So thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I can't wait for the turn lane. I'm so excited.
And then, Mayor, it looks like we have another question.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Our comment on the donations, it's great we got two in coffee and donuts, but I was reading that police department receiving $200 to be applied towards the motorcycle fund. That was not mentioned?
That's correct, and that, we'll bring that up in the fourth quarter donation report.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions about Appleway and Country Vista? And so the final item that we want to brief you on tonight is, as you recall, we have had several prior opportunities for the community to engage in the budget process. And this afternoon, we launched the most recent one of those. And so we just wanted to brief Council about that. This is our opportunity not only to get some additional input from the community on the budget process, but also to introduce them in a more meaningful way to priority-based budget. And so what's going to happen is that people will get the opportunity to come in, review the projects, the budgets associated with those projects, and then tell us whether they think that investment in that particular, and I said project, I meant program, in that particular program should be at a higher level, a lower level, or if they're fine with the level that's been proposed. And so this gives an introduction into a tool that we hope to use much more meaningful going forward and gain some budget feedback that we can use throughout the remainder of the project. And so if folks are asking how they can become more aware of or involved in the budget process, this is a great way to get them introduced to what's happening with some real numbers that allow them to give us their feedback on what should be budgeted in those particular programs. Any questions on those items?
Councilmember Kurtz or Cargill, any questions?
No questions.
No questions for me either.
Thanks. All right, moving right along, Spokane Valley Fire Department. Welcome, Chief Soto. I didn't see you guys out giving out candy. Did I miss you?
Probably, probably. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, citizens, future firefighters. There's no way it would happen. The excitement back there for the donuts, they would never make it. All right, I'm bringing you the numbers for October 2024. Next slide, please. So for the month of October, overall, we had 2,111 incidents. Of those roughly 83, 82% were for EMS calls. Next slide. So this is a heat map for just the month of October, just giving you indication. The, obviously, the middle spot there, 138, that's your hottest spot. And then as it gets lighter to green and then blue is where it kind of really disperses. But generally, you can see the bulk of the heat for the month is in the opportunity neighborhood. Next slide, please. So overall, we're at 20,305 incidents. Again, roughly 82% are for EMS. Next slide. This is the year-to-date heat map. And I don't know if it's just me, but the way I'm standing, but you, it almost looks like there's a bullseye right in that general area where all the red is. So we are working on that. It's just, I'd like to say things have calmed down, but they have not. So, next slide, please. Okay, so for the month, we had those 2111 incidents. We had, out of those calls, we had 2,630 responses. And then for the year of the just over 20,000 calls, we've had 25,265 responses. So again, there are some calls that require more than just one unit. Overall, our top three engines, Engine 7, 8, and 1 are roughly at 300 or just above it. And then for the year, we have Engine 7, Engine 1, right at the 3,000 call mark, or 3,000 response mark. So things again are based in those areas. Next slide, please. So this just gives us the top graph is showing you location, incident by location of station. And then the other one is the same, but just for the year. So roughly 46% of our call volume is for this past month, where Station 8, Station 7, and Station 6. Station 6 has really picked up in activity lately. I don't, I couldn't explain why. I know last month I could explain why we had the fair. But I guess the fair would still, no, that was more September. So just things have picked up in that area. Next slide, please. This is our auto aid. So on the top, top graph are the Fire District 8, City of Spokane, and Fire District 9. Those are the three areas that we responded to 34 times for D8, 34 times for City of Spokane, and 22 times for D9. And then they interned for auto aid, responded into our area. City of Spokane responded 59 times, D8 50 times, and D9 15 times.
Interesting. Real quick, before you go past that, just a quick question for you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm looking at these numbers, and it seems like we're getting more aid from outside than we're providing. Is there anything? Is that due to lack of resources on your part?
No, ma'am. So auto aid is strictly based on location. So if the call, this is a perfect spot right here where we're all standing, or I'm standing, you're sitting. I could be standing in your area, right? So this is your area, but right here behind me, it's the next fire district. And the call is in that fire district, but their closest unit is, say Commissioner Astmas, I'm the closest unit. So even though it's not my call, I go. And so that, these are usually, these are the calls that are really on the borders.
Okay, gotcha. I just want to make sure that you aren't under resourced, and how could we do, what can we do to help that? So.
Yeah, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. It's all based on location and appropriate use. So again, if the closest unit, you were the closest unit to this call, and they were requiring a paramedic, and you were the closest paramedic unit, even though I'm there, I'm an EMT, I would still go on that call, but you would have to go as well, and then you would count as the auto aid. So if you recall, there's been some movement with the city, and so it does change a little bit on the auto way. So.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Next slide. So this is the year-to-year, month-to-month, and you can see that for October, it was our busiest October on record. And currently, we are still five and a half percent ahead of last year's call volume. So I would actually be quite surprised if we did not get over 24,000 calls for this year. Next slide, please. And so now we're going to just bring in just Liberty Lake. Next slide. So for the month of October, we had 89 calls, roughly 82% were EMS. Next slide. This is the, where all the calls were located at. Obviously, we're not going to give you the exact address, but we want to give you the kind of area where the calls are generating for the month, and that's where they are at. Next slide. Year-to-date, we're just over 1,000 calls. What's ironic is the EMS calls is really, it really falls on the overall. So overall, we're like 76%. So it's just interesting that the EMS calls kind of dropped significantly there. But again, we're over 1,000 calls. Next slide. And again, a picture of the year-to-date heat map of where all the calls are. Next slide. So the 89 calls, I believe they generated 114 responses, and then 1,000 calls generated just over 1,300 responses. The bulk of the calls obviously are handled by Engine 3, which is good. That's what we want to see. So unless they needed help or had one of our units cover them, we're, they're covering the bulk of their calls. And then overall, year-to-date, that 841 of those calls were handled in-house by Engine 3. And last slide. You can see we had a significant drop off on calls, which is good. I, I've enjoyed seeing that. We've had three straight months of 100-plus calls, actually four straight, five, six, six straight months actually of 100-plus calls. So it's good those come down, and we're 3% behind last year's call volume, which again is good. We definitely want to see that start to slow down. So we have, so that's good. That's it. Any questions?
Councilmember Kennedy and then Councilmember Ball?
Then, Councilmember Ball was.
I didn't see who was first. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm just always curious, you know, the, your bullseye in the opportunity area. I work in that area. I'm in the bullseye, I think. And I see, is it at night when all this is happening, or?
It's just steady. It's all day long.
What is it?
It's everything. I
denser population probably doesn't help.
I mean, it's everything. I mean, I wish I could say it was just this one call, but it's, yeah.
Chief, thanks always for that information. Do you have any statistics on the average month or even a year that you guys go out and repair the smoke alarms, replace them? Any type of statistics on that?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. I can get that to you on the next one if you'd like.
If you could, that'd be great. At least a couple of times a year, I ask that same question.
Okay.
Not, you always get the information, but the reason why I do that is so the citizens realize that's a service that you guys provide that is absolutely fantastic. That they can call the fire department, they will come out, check your fire alarms, and if they're defective, replace them. I mean, it's a service that saves lives.
Well, and there is a level of what we replace because the state stepped in and was not happy with us replacing the permanent fire alarms. So now we can only do battery. You could, like, we can have it, and you guys would have to replace it yourselves, but the moment we unplug one and plug that in, they said we're breaking the law, that we can't do that. That's, that's union work.
Yeah, that, but that is a service that is really, really hits home for the benefit of our, all the citizens.
So, yeah, we're.
Thank you for that.
But we just did it in October, so we will get those numbers out too. So.
Any may have any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, Mayor, but I wanted to also, while Chief was up here, point out that David is recording a podcast with some of the prevention folks, talking about the most common holiday fire safety-related things. So that episode will be dropping here in a couple of weeks. So I want to thank the chief for allowing his folks to participate in that.
Sure. No problem.
Great. Good to hear. Thank you. All right, Lurie Lake Sewer and Water District. Anybody? I don't see anybody online in Sewer and Water District. Bill, Nada, we haven't seen Tom prior to. Okay, I guess if we have them come on later, we can jump back. All right. Now for the good stuff. We have the Trailhead Restaurant Proposals. And so, and I don't have names in front of me because I don't have my access, so I apologize for that. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself, since I don't have that, and I really apologize. That's
No problem.
not a good look for me.
It's good to be back. Thank you for having us back. My name's Doug Byrd. I'm affiliated with Byrd Real Estate Group. I am your listing broker for the Trailhead facility. So tonight, we have three restaurateurs that want to present and represent to you tonight, just to share with you their concept of use of the Trailhead facility. So why don't we begin with the owner of the Serenac?
Perfect. Great. Welcome. We do, we have to have a couple of councilmembers online as well if they're watching.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Matthew Byrd. I am with SVN Cornerstone, and I'm representing Brandon Blanchett with the Serenac Public House. I just want to do a brief introduction. Brandon's been in business 15 years now, a very successful restaurant downtown. He'll share with you his menu and some of the things that he's done. He's going to hand them out. Very excited to have another opportunity in the Spokane area, serving a new segment of the market. Some of the things that are really exciting is, one, being on a golf course, two, the patio, and three, getting to kind of design and make some new space. He has done that before with his current restaurant. So he's got a track record of developing brand-new space. They're right downtown on Main Avenue and doing very well. So this is an exciting opportunity to kind of make a second phase of that. So here's Brandon.
Well, and to be doing well downtown right now is fantastic.
Doing well might be a little nice for me right now, but we're surviving. We're surviving. So. Anyway, so I'm Brandon Blanchett. He probably covered all my interesting stuff, and I've been at Serenac for almost 15 years now. Been in the restaurant business since, sorry, since I was 18, and I'm 46 now. So pretty much most of my life, I guess, my adult working life, something that I'm very passionate about. I love people. I've gotten out of the business, went into sales, and ultimately came back. A, because the money was much easier, the hours were better when I started having kids, and it's just something I love. I sold insurance, and I've done, you know, a couple of other sales jobs, and just nothing got me excited and going to work like being in the restaurant business. And I love golf, and I've been a golfer my whole life, so I know kind of what golfers want and don't want when they're golfing. So my, you know, my concept would be kind of, you're looking at my menu, it's pretty, pretty simple. We call it American upscale pub fare. It's pretty basic stuff that you find at a pub. But we make probably 90% of our stuff in-house. So we don't just drop stuff out of a bag and put it into the fryer. So I think that would, you know, my concept would be to have grab-and-go stuff from breakfast sandwiches to cold sandwiches, a beer cooler by the window, which I'm assuming you guys are all familiar with the layout, yeah? For the range, and then same with the cart, like the range in the cart, I would kind of plan on running the same thing. And then obviously adjust my menu. I adjust my menu all the time to kind of what my demographic is. So what you see there could change depending if people wanted steaks or, you know, some fancier stuff also on the menu. We're capable of doing that. We just kind of do what our demographic tells us. So, but that's our basic style of food that we do there. Like to have good, good food, good beer, happy, fun service. I mean, it's a golf course, so I think it's very doable to cater to the golfers and to have just a sit-down for anyone who's not a golfer, come in and have dinner there and have a very enjoyable experience. It's a very, very cool space with a cool patio, and the building's beautiful. So I'd love to be part of it and love to make it happen. And but yeah, basically, we're pretty simple and easy. Just try and do good and have fun.
Can you talk to us a little bit about your thoughts about possibly catering, you being an option for catering this space?
Oh, I forgot about that spot, which, so for, we're almost 15 years now, we have a rooftop space up on top of the Serenac. Excuse me. So we've catered, man, I can't tell you, numerous weddings, anniversaries, the graduation thing, birthdays. Graduation things. Come on. When you have like a 25-year reunion, thank you. Tough word. So we've done reunions, weddings, all sorts of funerals, unfortunately, but done a few of those. We've done a ton of catering up on the rooftop. So to me, when I see the space, you just open a door and get right in there. To me, I go, wow, that's a lot easier than, because there's no elevator up to the rooftop. So. So anyway, I, we have a ton of experience doing that and booking parties. So anyway, I, we have a ton of experience doing that and booking parties, taking care of huge parties and running those, yeah.
Um, so I guess we're open for questions. So I'll just kind of let you guys go and like I said, we have a couple of people online, so. If you wanna, Annie or Chris, if you wanna jump in after we have questions here, go ahead, go ahead, council member Ball.
So I've been to your restaurant. It's.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Um, so, um, on the catering, so then you'd be willing to cater into our little space next door.
Absolutely.
For events that people are having privately, right? And would you then also be, um. Able to provide alcohol for those events if necessary?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That's the easiest part, it's the food, that stuff.
All right, any other questions here? Councilmember Spencer.
Yeah, I'm just curious if, if you have any sort of concepts about what, what you hope the restaurant to look like.
So I, man, I love the pro shop and I love how nice it is. So I'd like to somehow, I mean, I'm not a. Designer by any means, so I'd get help on that, but I'd like it to flow with the newness and the freshness and the clean. Cleanliness? Clean, like the clean lines that, that has in there, so. I'm pretty much open, but I would. Definitely take other people's advice on that. I'd hire somebody to kinda give me some advice and go from there. But I'm open to your ideas if you have any too. I listen to everybody.
Well, if you want the council designing the restaurant.
Okay, I guess I don't know enough, yeah.
Um, I've got a couple of questions, but I'm, I'll go to, uh, council member Cargill or council member Kurt to see if they have any questions.
Madam Mayor, I, I had one question, but I'm not sure if it's appropriate for right now, so tell me when I should ask this, but. Um, as we get to the three different presentations and then the, um. Uh, for lack of a better word, the deal points, the, um, financial aspects that were provided to us. When should we ask those questions?
Um, I would say let's, let's hear the presentate, all three presentations. Um, and because I, I've got some, hopefully some kind of rules of engagement for the, for the questions coming for everybody. So thank you for asking that. Um, council member Cargill, did you have any questions? Okay, I'll take that. No, um, now I can't remember.
You want to talk financials now?
No questions.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Um, uh, I can't remember exactly, um, from the, from the proposal. How many were you looking at seating?
You know, that was, it was like eighty, I'm gonna say eighty-ish without the patio, if I remember right. Yeah, eighty to ninety, and then that's, you know, and then the patio, so.
Eight plus patio, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, um, that was.
How many people can sit on the patio? Do you?
Oh, gosh, I don't know.
It depends on the, and it's probably different out here, but I know downtown, it depends on the fire department will tell you that. It depends. Uh, the points of exit that people can get out of, basically. Um, so the fire department would have to, but the size of it, like two hundred, but I don't know how many the.
It's, it's, so it's.
It's a huge patio.
Sixteen feet deep, if I remember right.
Maybe one twenty, but yeah, it depends on the fire department.
And seating that they.
Right, right.
Okay, can they use the whole thing or, you know?
I think that's.
I was, I was told that it's unless there's an event going on, then they get the events base, gets that half of the patio and then the restaurant gets the other half. But I don't know that for sure. That's just what I've been told.
Okay, any further questions for our Serenac group? Okay, all right, stick around.
Thank you very much. Go Zags.
Thanks, Brandon. Go Zags.
Thank you, Brandon. Okay, next up is Kase.
Pardon me for just a moment, I've got a slideshow I presented as well.
So thanks for coming back. I wasn't able to be at the last, uh, meeting. I was out of town for my day job, so thank you for.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. I love, uh, I love working with people and I love presenting, so this is kind of a, it's a treat for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again for letting me come back and present. Uh, my name's Isaac Cunningham. I'm the owner of My Sushi Sensei. We're a private chef service and restaurant group that focuses on the sushi experience. And with a big focus on education, because we believe that sushi is made to be experienced and not just eaten. Slide. Our mission, uh, for this endeavor is the Kase Sushi Bar and Cocktail, Cocktail Lounge. Uh, our mission is to provide an immersive experience to the patrons of the Trailhead Golf Course that goes beyond. The restaurant that extends to the course and surrounding community in the inland Northwest. It is our vision to create an experience and to create a location, uh, that will draw people in to Liberty Lake. Uh, for not just golf, but for events, for experiences and for hopefully some great sushi. Slide. Uh, oh, rats. Went to, went too soon. Uh, so our business concept is Kase, uh, with the Kase. Stemmes from the Japanese word Omakase, which means chef's choice or I leave it up to you. Uh, it is one of the most revered or, uh. Styles of sushi, because it focuses on the sushi experience, which is really what we're about. Uh, so we've designed Kase as a modern upscale sushi restaurant. Uh, that utilizes immersive events and experiences to both draw in and retain golfers and the community at large. Our proposed menu is on the second page. Uh, it is a proposed menu, but it walks through the full sushi bar. Our plan for, um, creating on-course options as well. Uh, if you flip over to the second page, we've got Japanese entrees, appetizers and dessert. As well as on the final page, uh, options for our walk-up window. Uh, which was intended to serve the golfers as they're out golfing, uh, in a manner that is both. Quick and easy, but also not really messy. Because I know that when you're out golfing, it is important to, uh, one, keep the course clean and keep yourself clean. And, uh, sometimes, uh, sushi cannot be as clean as we'd like. So we've created a couple of different unique styles and options for, uh, golfers that might entertain and appease. Uh, but we also plan to have those traditional golf foods, burgers, hot dogs, fries, the quick and easy grab and go. Style menu. Uh, slide. Uh, one of the, I keep sliding too early. Uh, one of the unique items that we've got is a, uh. Cocktail lounge. So we plan on utilizing a full bar and creating, uh, contemporary cocktails. As well as cock, or sake teenies, which are just sake infused drinks. Next slide. Uh, one of our other ones is our hook to table experience. Uh, up on the screen is our presentation to North Idaho College. This is Chef Jeremy walking through, uh, how we take our hamachi from. Hook all the way through sashimi, nigiri, traditional rolls and specialty rolls. It's one of our new experiences and it's a captivating experience, because you're actually gonna learn all of the pieces that go into creating. That sushi that we know and love. Slide. One of our, uh, most seasoned experiences is the immersive sushi experience. Where we start off talking about the tools and tricks of the trade, then we dive into the origins of sushi and roll our way to the modern day. Pun intended, because this is a full immersive sushi experience, meaning that it is a hands-on course. Uh, usually takes about two hours and we walk through all the different styles of sushi and, uh, oftentimes have, uh, sake going as well. Slide. And as much as I like the idea of turning the basement into a giant storage unit. I really fancy the idea of turning it into the bunker cigar lounge. Uh, so our vision for it would be to create a space that people can enjoy, uh, to create a, a homey environment. That really focuses on atmosphere and, uh, excellent smokes and drinks. This, of course, is a, uh, concept, not necessarily slated in stone. Uh, we would need to have an architect look at the space and really redesign to make sure that we're maximizing its potential. Uh, slide. Next is our management team. Uh, we've got a stacked management team. Dan Mulvaney is gonna be our. Uh, general manager or a proposed general manager. He's got forty years of restaurant experience. Uh, he's opened twenty-six, uh, restaurants over the course of his career and part owner in nineteen. And was the assistant manager at the largest event center in Michigan. Uh, Jeremy Rainier is going to be our kitchen manager. He's got ten years of kitchen experience from planning, opening, operating and running. John Mueller's got sixteen years of experience in beverage service. Uh, he also had spent three managing a cigar bar. And Molly Bill has fifteen years of event industry experience and she has. A, just a tremendous amount of contacts in the local, or local area. And what we don't have currently, we have access to through Cisco's consultant network. Dan's currently a, a. Salesman with Cisco, and so we've been utilizing their resources to help build out our systems on the backend. And create a more streamlined, uh, experience. Slide. We took the opportunity to interview a couple of your golfers, uh, which we found, uh, to great success. I apologize about the, uh. The rawness of our data here, but this is all of the data that we got. Uh, to summarize, uh, sushi was very well received. We spent a lot of time trying to understand what was valuable to the golfers. Um, and where, what they saw would be a value add to the golf course. Sushi was well received. On-course foods and drinks was really important to them. Um, that's why we decided to actually add in those American options. To the walk-up window, because hot dogs were so popular. Um, the sushi burrito was actually extremely well received as well. Uh, as a sushi on-the-go option. And most of the golfers were looking for someplace that they could make a day of their golf experience. It wasn't just a go, quick golf and go. Um, so we're looking for. That unique experience that we could provide that would give them a reason to come over all of the other golf courses in the area. Slide. And these are a few of our community partners. Uh, we've done an exceptional amount of outreach and supporting of local nonprofits. Over the course of the last three years. Uh, it's been our goal to hit a hundred thousand dollars in money is raised for local nonprofits. We, uh, reach out and support kids in education specifically. And we are sitting currently at ninety thousand dollars after the, uh, Post Falls Food Bank Auction, which was this last weekend. Slide. And these are a few of our references. You can find those on the, uh, final couple of pages of our packet. Uh, we have part, had the, uh, the blessed opportunity to partner with a bunch of local venues and other businesses. Who've been extremely generous with their time and their space with us. Uh, Terroir is a, a wine club over in Coeur d'Alene, where we've hosted experiences. Coeur d'Alene Cellars is another of the same. And then Manitoba Golf and Country Club, uh, we host their, uh. New Year's and Christmas parties for the last couple of years, and they've all written letters of reference for us as a, as a nod to. Where we can be and where we'd like to be. Um, we believe that Kase would be an excellent addition to the Trailhead Golf Course and we would love the opportunity to grow our business. Along with the golf course as well. Any questions?
I'm gonna let anybody else go first. All right, I guess I'll, I'll ask similar questions. Um, it's only fair. Um, so, uh, seating capacity, what are you looking at?
Um, we estimate seventy-five to eighty. Um, we're not really sure, because we don't have concrete plans yet. Uh, but our vision follows pretty similarly along the lines of what, uh. The blueprints were set. Uh, we will need to rework the kitchen, um, and figure out how to maximize that space. We imagine it's gonna be around seventy-five to eighty, uh, but that's a, again, a rough number.
Okay, um, what about, um, catering?
Or.
Or the event space next door?
Absolutely. We're really looking forward to that. Having, uh, a set dedicated space to host events and to host other people. Um, really gives us the opportunity to push past just that, that restaurant. Um, which is something that we've been doing in the community already.
I think that's what I had. Any other questions here? Okay, then go ahead, customer, uh, Mayor Protem.
Uh, thanks very much, mayor. A quick question, um, and, and I know you said it was just a concept, but I'm pretty sure that. Um, because of the Clean Indoor Air Act, we would not be able to do the cigar lounge, um, in, in the basement, so. Um, I just want to make sure that, uh, you guys are aware of that as well.
Good point. That was something that I didn't know of, but, uh, yeah, it was a concept that we've been kicking around and thought it would be a fun add to. Draw in that, the extra, or give people that extra draw as a, a unique cornerstone of the community.
Anybody else? Councilmember Kurt's, anything from you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here in chambers? Councilmember Kennedy?
I have one question in regards to the event center. Do you have any idea how much usage you think you would have with that?
That's a great question. Um, as far as usage goes, it really depends on. The amount of interaction that we get. We really specialize in interacting with local community partners. And I feel that we could get a lot of traction from all of the other area networks as well. Um, our business sushi sensei hosts in-home experiences, but we also do venue-based experiences. And in December of last year, we were running three to five events a week. And I believe that that would be an excellent add to that space. Obviously, we would give preference to. Uh, City of Liberty Lake events, uh, Rotary and the golf course, of course, uh. But to fill in those extra time and space, uh, utilizing the space for larger experiences is, uh, my plan. But I would really, uh, need to focus or push that question over to Molly. She would be our events coordinator. And we would be utilizing her as a, a salesperson for interacting with local businesses to set up events.
Thank you.
Well, and just to remind, obviously, you know, uh, from my personal experience, like my son had his wedding reception there this summer. It's one of the first ones. So that there's a lot of use for those receptions, like the gentleman from Serenac was saying. Uh, graduations, reunions, showers and things like that, not necessarily, you know, um. You know, and I think it's great, you know, looking to, to bring things in, but you keep those things in mind as well.
Is there a, a use of the space that you would like to see or?
Well, we, we built it for the community, for them to have events like weddings and graduations and just everything that we've, we've already named. That's, that's why it's there.
Yeah. We could definitely skew our focus towards that in our marketing and our sales process. To make sure that we're actually hitting that mark for you. Absolutely.
All right, good, council member done.
Um, Isaac, just so I can be clear, the current adventure, My Sushi Sensei is a home-based experiences and educational opportunities. Is there an actual, I'll call it brick and mortar-like restaurant that you currently operate?
That is correct. Uh, we have a quick service restaurant over in the Post Falls Pavilion, Sushi Sensei. Uh, this would be, Kase would be a different style of experience. Uh, Sushi Sensei over in the pavilion is a great option for quick, fast sushi. Um, but what we were looking for is to really. Drum up the, the experience side, and there's only so much that you can do in a, in a quick service environment. And so we were really looking for more of a, a controlled sit-down experience there where we can guide the customer through that, uh, that sushi experience.
Alrighty, if there's no more questions, we will move on to number three. Thank you, stick around.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, Chavalitas.
Welcome.
And Sharon will introduce them.
I am Sharon Reynolds with Bird Real Estate Group. Um, but I am representing Tony. With Chavalita's Mexican Grill, and you've already met him once, but I have, they are back.
I was not here, so thank you. Appreciate it.
There's some stuff different here. There's many.
Oh, okay.
Did you go to go? Did you go to good rate?
Remember I told you last time I told my son, I'm gonna forgive more than you'll ever earn, but that was not true.
But you taught you taught him well, it sounds like, though.
Alright, hi again. We are Los Chavelas Incorporated. I'm Vanessa. This is Tony, my dad. Uh, my dad's been in business with for over forty years. I currently run his award-winning Mexican restaurant in Coeur d'Alene. That's been in business for thirty-four years this coming year, and he runs Casey's Place that he's owned for over twenty years.
What I could agree with. Well, whose place? Which is?
Casey's Place. He runs Casey's Place right now.
Okay.
Um, we've made some changes to our previous presentation. Um, if you could flip to the next slide, please. We've decided we're going to combine both restaurants together. Casey's Place is pretty successful in the valley and Los Chavelas has been successful out in Coeur d'Alene. We've picked some great items from both menus and added new items to the menu. Um, next slide, please. Um, these are some of the options we've already put on the menu. There are some new items that are very golf-friendly. Very, you know, a lot of handhelds, things that are quick and easy to make. And we make everything at the restaurant in Coeur d'Alene from scratch, and same with Casey's Place. So we are able to bring both restaurants together and create this new place called Chavalitas. Um, next slide, please. To touch on catering, I have been doing caterings now for my dad for sixteen years. Most recently, I was just here in Liberty Lake ten days ago. I catered for Itron. I catered from Los Chavelas Mexican Restaurant. I've done private events for customers that live on Legacy Ridge and that live at the other golf course. I have done birthday parties, grad parties, weddings. And we've been at Zephyr Lodge before doing weddings. Recently, I was just at the dentist and my regular was at the front desk. And one of the dental hygienists, we catered her wedding at Zephyr Lodge. And then they tell me, we just saw Tony. And I said, oh, really? Where? They're like, here, he delivered sandwiches from Casey's Place. We've already been delivering and catering to this area for the past few years. I used to live in Liberty Lake. I love this community. I want to be a part of this community. And I believe that the businesses here are great, but we bring a catering aspect that was not here. I have a banquet room in Los Chavelas in Coeur d'Alene, and I'm full majority of the time. I have parties, private birthday parties, family uh reunions. I have just a gathering space. We can fit about forty-five people in our banquet room. And on the daily, it's full. I get, you know, groups of eight, groups of ten. I've had walk-in groups of twenty that I could accommodate very quickly. I've even done buffet style back there with like a like a full taco bar setup or people have ordered straight from the menu. We really have it down to a science. We are good at catering. Next slide. Um, the interior architecture, um, it's the same images from the previous time. So this is the front entryway with some really cool lighting that my brother had designed. Next slide. And the floor plan that would fit a total of ninety-three, including the bar and dining. Uh, next slide. And then this is the kitchen. And next slide. This is our bar design, which we intend to have beer, wine, classic cocktails. Um, next slide, please. There's something that I feel like is missing throughout the whole general area of this, you know, Liberty Lake and Spokane and Coeur d'Alene, and that's mezcal. Mezcal is a great form of tequila. We intend to bring that in for some of these unique cocktails, really make our bar a spot, not just for the golfers, but for the people of Liberty Lake and those who are traveling into Liberty Lake. I have a lot of customers that go to Coeur d'Alene that are from Liberty Lake or from Spokane or traveling in to come see us and have our food. I don't have a liquor license in Coeur d'Alene, meaning that my food has to be good in order for you to go there. And we've really mastered that. And Casey's Place has done a very well job, a good job being in the local community and been a staple for so many years. Uh, next slide. And then this is just a little bit of our backstory. Um, I've worked for my dad sixteen years. I went to school for something totally different. And even while I was in college and worked in human resources, I still worked for my dad. And this is where I ended up, and I love it. Um, I would, I was gonna pass it over to you if you wanted to say anything else.
Again, thanks for the opportunity to come here for the second time. We try to be quick, but we never do that. Anyhow, um, so that picture of me, it's uh thirty-eight years ago. I would, we used to do, it was before Taco Taco Tuesday, so we did a Taco Monday. And it was only pork carnitas. Pork carnitas, that's all we had. And so there there are be. So anyhow, having said that, Vanessa overlooked some of these things that we do for the community as well. We do a lot of good. Uh, we sponsor a lot of needing needing people like like um, uh, one of you kids wanna go to a trip to to uh um um, Africa and don't quite have all the money yet. We 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 have events there at at the restaurant, Corleone fundraisers for them to to accomplish their stuff. We do now, we're doing one tomorrow, tomorrow. And so the banquet room there would be appropriate to do all that, to serve all of you, of course. And to do all the good things we like to do to the to the people. Um, we done, just you know, we done weddings from a hundred people to four hundred. We done events up to a thousand people. So we we nothing's too big, nothing's too small, okay? So having said that, I really appreciate the opportunity. My wife, Josephina, runs Casey's Place. And I uh, she's been telling me what to do lately, so. With that, thank you very much. Have any questions? Questions for Vanessa?
I I think I think you answered the questions I had asked.
I tried to hit all your points.
Yeah, so I'm gonna turn it over to anybody, uh, other council members. Councilmember Spencer.
No, I I know in the last presentation, you said that you're currently running the La Chavelas. And so are you gonna be running this one or?
I intend to.
Okay.
Um, ideally, it would be nice to have a general manager. Um, I think at first that is not going to be feasible. I will have to run it. And I already have two managers in place at my other restaurant. I've tried to step out a little bit to see what that looks like. And, you know, it's live and learn, but a lot of things are going really well. Uh, my customers have really grown to love my managers and my team, but I had to set that example. So I would have to set the example here and then moving forward, possibly not be the manager. We'll see. Or you might see my face every day. I don't know. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Very good. Very, very impressive.
Thank you.
Good thing you got the family to be able to do this.
Yeah.
Uh, what I find interesting is that you're pub and grill and cantina, and yet when I look at your menu, be honest with you. You're not what I look at as a typical Mexican restaurant.
We are not going to be, I don't think.
Which I think is remarkable.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm looking at your handhelds that is there, uh, pretty good selection, salads the same way. And under traditional mains, you've got fish and chips. There, you really have just four items.
Yeah, we will probably add more over over time. I wasn't sure what needs and wants are for the community. Um, some of those dishes are Mexican, and then with the handhelds, I did quite a bit of different ones. Most of those are from Casey's Place already. I just changed the names, but um, they, those are sandwiches that already exist.
Well, your concept design, once again, I was impressed when you did it before. Impressed again. It really, once again, it does look like a Mexican restaurant, uh, but I don't know what a Mexican restaurant looks like. They really had their own
Right.
Concept on it. Uh. It's unique.
Yeah.
Really is.
That's that was the plan, which I obviously have no eye for design, so I give that all the credit to my brother.
Thank you.
I would like to take over it. Don't go away just yet. Back to your question. So one of the reasons we start with such a small menu is because we we have learned not to go with a with a big menu. I had a restaurant in Post Falls called Blue Bay. And it was, it was a, it was a tough one. We had too many items in the menu.
Right.
We wanna start like this, and then we can add as the public ones.
Smart. Very smart.
Especially for ingredients-wise, in case things don't sell. Yeah. Right, um, Councilmember Kurtz or Mayor Protem?
No questions yet.
Okay, thank you. Alright.
No questions, uh, Mayor, uh, but uh, once it uh wraps up, I'll I'll, I can make a motion.
Okay, alright. So yeah, so I I um, so here's, here's what I I'd like to do. Um, we don't have really a whole lot of members of the public. I don't know who all is online. But I did want to, um, which is a little out of nor- the ordinary, but if we do have any of our citizens. Um, and I do, there are some in the audience, I would love to hear from them. Um, before the council starts to talk, like I said, before we get into those deliberations, I I've got some some things just to to lay out beforehand. So if we have anybody here in chambers who'd like to make any comments about the presentations, um, or if there's anybody online, I'd like to open that up, um, and encourage that. The Re-Lake resident, Tammy Jaeger.
So I also am a golfer and an eater. So I guess my comments are related to that, um, that I I thought the presentation was fantastic, well-thought-out. Um, so I don't know the numbers, and I'm a numbers person, but I would say, um, I would support uh, their presentation or what they have to offer, or Sarnock seems to be uh, more of a balanced community effort of golfers and others that don't golf.
Thank you. Alright, I know there's some other meeting members who aren't looking up. They aren't taking the bait. Okay, um, we do have a couple others in the back row who are also Re-Lake residents. Any? Oh, okay. And what what online? Okay, great. Um, if you could introduce yourself and just, um, again, you know, no questions, we just kind of just get your general feel. You can introduce yourself. No? Are they coming on?
Not responsive.
Okay, Brad Hamlet.
Could you come up to the podium, please?
Here, we can, we can share. Okay. Here's if anybody else.
Let me see here.
Any any luck with our person online? No. Okay, alright. So so before the council starts, uh, you know, discussing, you know, who we, who you guys, I don't have a vote, um, might uh want to move forward with. I just do wanna remind a couple things, so please consider that the the financial packages that have been presented to you all are the best in finals, so there will be no um, attempts at negotiating the financial packages at this time. Um, so that that's off the table. I do wanna remind you of this, we're as a city, you know, to to, in my mind, all all of the proposals are cash positive, and that that's relate to in my in my world, that puts everybody on even ground. Uh, as a city, we're not here to, you know, necessarily maximize my profit at the restaurant, but we're here to provide a service to our residents and to the communities around us. And which option is going to best fit that? What is going to best fit the community? What is best going to draw people from other communities? Um, because it's, it is not just golfers, it's families, it's business people, it's people from Post Falls, Newman Lake, hopefully Spokane Valley. We want to draw um, from other places. Um, so I'd like you guys to keep that in mind so that, you know, we we know we're serving the um, a greater um, greater population, um, and um so that we can maximize that. And um, and also in my mind, you know, just um, just a reminder, we do to keep in mind the other businesses we have here in Liberty Lake who have been here for a while, um, and those that are new. Um, you know, think about what we have and what we don't have. So we want, we want, uh, we want to be able to draw. Um, so that those are my key key points in going through this and and listening to the presentation, so um, I will open it up to the council for discussion. If you have specific questions, all of our restaurateurs are here. Um, so we can, um, if there's a specific question for a specific group, we'll have them come to the podium and um, answer a question. But again, um, there's no, you know, discussions on negotiating any, negotiating thing, anything on the financial side of things at this point. So with that, I will open it up.
Mayor, can I um, can I make a comment?
Yeah, cuz I know you've got to leave pretty soon.
Yeah, um, so uh, first of all, I wanna say thank you to all of the um folks who have presented, uh, great presentations from everyone. Uh, obviously, uh, the seven of us council members and the mayor, you know, we didn't, we didn't run for office to pick restaurants or uh menus or anything like that. So we trust uh the three of you uh to to do that uh with this. And um, I I think there's one uh presentation that we've had uh that uh has been uh consistent, has been the most professional, most planned out, and it's also the best um, financial deal for for the city as well. Um, and I think it's, it's the one group that also has the most experience uh in in others. And so I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to instruct staff to bring back a contract with, and I'm gonna butcher the name here, La Savita.
Okay, I I and but I and I apologize, stop. I I was hoping for, I I think there's other council members who'd like to make comments before we have a motion, so I was hoping for s- further discussion before we get that far. I don't know if that's appropriate for me to do or say, but um, I I think I I think I'm looking around the room here, more people wanna have further additional discussion and questions. So if you, if you could hold for a little bit?
Okay.
Okay, alright, so on next, uh, Councilmember Ball.
Um, I appreciate all three of you coming. You've all made um, nice presentations. Um, I have thought about this a lot cuz I'm kind of passionate about it. Um, I am a golfer and an eater too, Tammy, and um uh, I, again, they've all been lovely presentations. Um, I don't think that golf and sushi are a good match. Um, it just doesn't feel right to me. Um, and I am a little bit hesitant uh, because you haven't had an actual brick and mortar restaurant yet. And so I'd kind of like to err on the side of caution on that. Now, um uh, Tony and your family, um, it looks like a beautiful concept, but we have two other Mexican restaurants within walking distance of this location. And I don't think it's sustainable to have three Mexican restaurants so close to each other. Um, I think the community would be skeptical as to why we brought a third one in. Um, so that said, I'm most in favor of Saranac because they have a very um, the menu has a great variety. A lot of these dishes, and I, like I said, I've eaten there before, are more conducive to a golf crowd, in my opinion. Um, and I have confidence in this uh restaurateur. Uh, his restaurant's very nice, and he has been in business fifteen years. And uh, so I personally think that Saranac would be the best choice for this location and for golf in general.
Thank you. Next, uh, Councilmember Dunn.
Yeah, um, I'll speak in favor of the Saranac bid for the purpose. I I recognize this is probably the most familiar and um recognizable for the concept we originally began the Trailhead renovation with. Um, we specifically set out to the notion of um, the nature of the restaurant, I guess, I'd say as a public house. Um, I recognize further the fifteen years in business in an existing location. I recognize um specifically the same recipe, uh, formula, I call it, for the nature of business and that longevity. I think that has um great utility to talk about what the potential is in the future. Um, and yeah, I guess I I share um, Councilmember Ball's perspective and the nature of the fair. Um, uh, to to put another uh Mexican fair location in in the city like this, to me, would challenge up everybody in terms of the ability to gather, uh, you know, what might be the audience uh for the purpose. So, um, yeah, I I I support the Saranac's bid in that regard.
Right, next, Councilmember Kennedy?
Um, I'm having a challenge with the process. One, coming into this to say that this is a, this is the final no negotiation or something like that. Um, that makes no sense to me. We're still negotiating because we're trying to figure out what's best for the citizens. The thing that I'm motivated by is called an enterprise fund. I'm not motivated that if I'm in favor or against a Mexican restaurant. I'm not motivated if I'm in favor or against a sushi restaurant or anything. I believe from my standpoint of being elected official, my responsibility is what, what am I doing with the citizens' money? And that comes to what we put into the building when it comes to what the lease is going to be. I have questions such as, I know with properties, when we had the old building, we were looking at what we're gonna do with it. We're trying to figure out what rates would be, and there was something like A, B, C of how they rate real retail space. And we were sort of down at the end of that. I would assume now that we have a brand-new building that we would be A. I have never had the privilege to see what is that compared to other places within the city? Now, because this is citizens' money, I feel that the discussion on what our personal preference is should have been in executive session. I also feel that Saranac has put it at a disadvantage tonight. That the other companies have had two presentations, and also we've had two weeks to think about their presentations, and I'm very pleased about that. Saranac was the first time that I heard them tonight. I think it's impressive. But I think we need to have to give the same respect to Saranac as we did with the other presenters. Is to give some consideration to that. So Enterprise Fund is just something I can't get away with. I can't get away from. It's not my responsibility, it's not the city's responsibility to determine what restaurant is going to be in this town. Okay? It is not that responsibility. And I don't see where government should get in to say that, well, we're, we're, we want a Mexican restaurant versus this. We don't want sushi like that. What it comes down to is what is the dollar amount? What are we spending our money on? Because what happens, the return has to be adequate to pay for the facility triple net, including the building roof has to be taken care of, water heaters and that sort of there. That amount of information, I need to be able to move forward. But I'm impressed with all three companies. You guys are good entrepreneurs. You say the right things. I've been in business for a long period of time. It's impressive, especially when you made a comment that you found when you started business, if you get too many options, it kind of work against you. So that's, that's right now. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The last thing, I've made a note of this. The event center. One of the main reasons we wanted to redo golf courses to have an event center, a city center for our residents, that is slowly being taken away. Now, the restaurants will have the ability to have events there, and we're going to make some, some off of that or percentage on it. Well, what I see is that the citizens are last on the list. Because if there's going to be events there, if I was a restaurant, I would want to book as many of things in the event that I, those that I could for catering stuff. That's a good revenue source for them. I'm concerned is that that's going to be tied up so much that the citizens aren't going to have access to it in a timely fashion. So, once again, it's an enterprise fund. We have to look at that and how we move forward.
And just a quick follow up, we did, we did consult on city attorney about going, about adjourning into executive session to have some of these discussion. And since this was, since this was, has now been brought to the public forum, it was determined there is no appropriate executive session RCW that that we could have had that under. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
Actually have a couple of questions, and they're, they're for each of the restaurateurs and I'm hoping I'm able to do those. And Madam Mayor, I heard you say that this is their best and final offer, and that was, I think, one of my questions. But I think one of my first questions had to do with the costs, if we look at the comparison. I'm wanting to know how firm these costs are, like the the tenant improvements at Liberty Lake would have to put forward as well as the tenant investment, because I think some of those costs go into the bottom line 20 year return figure. And so I'm, I'm curious if each of the restaurants, I mean, one of them has brought their architect. But have each of the restaurants gone through, are these sort of educated numbers? Are they, are they, are there designs out there that you guys are looking at to feel pretty confident that these are the costs that, that the city and the tenant investment piece would require? I think that's my first question.
I may require, I may ask Kyle to answer the first part, regards to the Liberty Lake tenant improvements.
So each of the, so each entity submitted their letter of intent. And so you have two of the three on here that are proposing a tenant investment repayment program. And so offer two and offer three on your sheet have a net, a net value essentially of zero through that payment process. But in in terms of, you know, how sharp in the pencil is on these, I'll, I'll let each, each business speak to that.
Well, and before, before you do, so to me, that would those, those numbers are the max that the city would do. Is how I read this.
So these are each, no, these are purely based on the each letter of intent submitted by the.
So it's not set up as this is the max.
Correct.
So these numbers could easily change.
Potentially.
So so the potentially would be only known through a lease negotiation process. And so that, each of these can probably answer that from their own letter of intent perspective, but as it relates to the finality, that would have to be determined through a lease negotiation process.
All right, so we'll go ahead. Tony.
So since I told you that I'm retired, I'm not saying I retire. So I'm still got the deep pockets. So that's the answers that I will ask you. I will, I will tell you if you, if you ask me some questions. I I done, you know, back in the day, my first restaurant cost $165,000. It was back in 91. Burrito King, of course, started way before that cost me $30,000. But anyhow, the biggest one, it cost me $2.2 million. Okay, the one in Post Falls. So, which my daughter has a problem when they mention in that restaurants. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there anymore. But in here, we are, we're going to go happy medium. We, we, my son wants everything like looking beautiful and doesn't cost a lot of money. So we're going to go kind of like is on, 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 on the copies that I gave you. But maybe in moderation a little bit, okay? We can always remodel. We can always make it beautiful. Once we pay back whatever we, you know, whatnot. We do have some cash on hand. We've been doing great. I don't want to mention some numbers here, but we have some cash on hand. So I can tell you, it's in the hundred thousands. So we'll see what happens. So that's all I can tell you. It's more than $100,000. Okay, so haven't say that. Have any questions for me? Or one of the things I wanted to say, I don't know if you've seen that, we went totally away from the Mexican restaurant. Just for you guys. We got mostly sandwiches, salads, that kind of stuff. But we do have a little bit of quesadillas, whatever, you know, just, just to but we're, we're not even close to be like any of you. We went and ate there, of course, not even close to have their menu, okay? We have like two items that look like, other than that, it's all, all, all new, all new to us. And you're right, we're going to have to, 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 even though we have the experience, we have to penetrate the, the, those, those the money flow that they'll come through that. They'll let us know. It's like, we would know whether it's going to work or not within the first couple, three years. We intend to hit it hard right from the get go. We've always done it. And we'll see what happens. I don't see why this shouldn't be any better. The building is beautiful. Liberty Lake is an up and up. I mean, it's all beautiful. I mean, it's, it's great. And so that's the reason. It's clear you don't want a Mexican restaurant. I'm just glad to have the opportunity to be here. Go ahead and choose whatever you would think is great. I applaud to them, okay? I'm not against it at all, okay? And you're probably doing me a favor in the long run, but right now, once I start, once I start, I can't stop, okay? Mainly because I'm heavy, but anyhow. But no, once, once I have an idea, I cannot stop. And if somebody, you know, it's, it's preferred, let it be. I still come and have a dinner there with them, okay? Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, well, well, so let, let's, let's yeah, let's have the other, yeah, let's let the other restaurateurs answer that question. There may be more. Brandon, would you like to go next? Brandon, would you like to go next?
I can speak for the Saranac. Findlay Construction is somebody that Brandon has worked with before on different projects. So we went through this project with the drawings that we have, maybe some small alterations, and had them come up with that proposal to finish off the space. And I think when you look at that space, you're talking a lot of infrastructure, capital improvements, heating and cooling systems, plumbing, electrical. And when you get into these types of projects, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get it to what we call a warm vanilla shell where a restaurateur can now go spend, and I think the numbers that you came up with, because you've done a couple of these models before, closer to another 400, almost $500,000 to finish off the space with the right equipment, everything from ovens and sinks and furniture fixtures, all that kind of stuff, yeah, F, F and E. So those numbers have really been analyzed several times over by the construction company, and then you had a design company that was doing everything. So it's a lot just to get the restaurant open, you know, once you've got a warm vanilla shell. I mean, forks, plates, and that kind of stuff is costly when you add it up and you're, you're having several hundred of those servings. So we've really gone, Brandon and I have spent a lot of time just going through those numbers with contractors and design people and your kitchen customer database that you go through where you buy your stuff. So pretty, pretty solid that that's what it's going to take to get this restaurant open. Speaking of the financial side of things, Brandon's been very successful in what he has done in the 15 years that he's been operated. He has, has nobody to pay for any of the things that he's doing now. And moving forward, this is not somewhere where we're going to go to a bank and get the loan to get this project up and going. Family resources, his dad is, is recently moved to Liberty Lake and was a big helped get the first location going. Not necessarily need him to do it today, but he really wants to. But there's other financial partners that Brandon has lined up to go into this. So the resources are there to complete this project and to do it the right way and to do it at a, at a high level. We've talked a lot about how the Saranac downtown has just a really good feel to it. Same feel bringing out to Liberty Lake where maybe get a little more of the community here to dine on a weekly basis, you know, even if you're not a golfer, you're going to want to come to the Saranac and experience the good food, the atmosphere, good drinks, in a good, open, clean environment like we had kind of talked about before. So financially prepared to do it, have the resources to do it, and really have gone through the numbers to know what it's going to cost to get it open. We appreciate what everything's been done there, but like, for example, the heating cooling system needs to be readjusted around that place to get distributed correctly. And I think sometimes those things get overlooked. And it's not a little $2,000 fix, it's a 20 or 30 or $50,000 fix when you look at some of that stuff. And we've gone through those numbers. Findlay Construction gave us some really good numbers, I think. Came back several different times to really get answered all those, all those questions. And then finishing off that lower level storage area space too, which would be used as backup kitchens, storage, coolers and things of that nature. So that adds a big piece of the puzzle too. So anything else?
Don't, you nailed it.
Okay.
I didn't forget five things like that.
I think we, I think we've got one follow up question.
Yeah, I just, would you guys be able to be open for the golf season this spring?
I mean, yes, depending on when the decision gets made.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Construction, but like I, we could be ready to go if everything was built out. Maybe not tomorrow, but maybe the next day.
You had mentioned in your, you've done a lot of catering downtown and other places, and so
Sure.
getting open at least to have some sort of beverages available, some food service available, even if there's, you know, not completely fully open with the, with the whole restaurant, there would be an avenue to have, you know, some beverages and some food supply to the golfers this spring. And, and the people in private reach too. And you guys.
All right, Castle.
That is an excellent question. So our best guess at the overall build price was in that letter of intent. We did a walkthrough with our builder, but even he had only had so much information to work with. We would need to sit down with an architect to walk through the space and just kind of make sure we've got all of the pieces fitting together like we'd like. So I'm not, that our number is not firm on like exact costs at the end of the day today. It would be something that we would need to work with you on and better understand what the space needs based on a building or an architect's recommendation.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions on that topic? All right, Councilmember Kurtz, does that answer your questions on that one?
Yeah, it did. And I think that, I think that was, I think I needed to hear that, that some of the costs are not as solid, and if we're making decisions based on the comparison that we got, it may not quite be accurate. And so I think that's what I wanted to point out is that I think we've got some restaurants in different phases of their solidification of the costs. And what I would actually love to see is maybe if it's possible to see the design, if they have one, what the look of Saranac would look like. We've been able to see what Chavalitas would look like. But I think that Councilmember Kennedy's point that we need to do good with the taxpayers' dollars, if we if, if patrons don't go to the restaurant, the restaurant's going to fail. And so I want to make sure that, one, we have a restaurant that fits with the community, and I wasn't, I didn't get elected to pick a restaurant either, but here we are. But that we don't have another inability of a restaurant to launch because the costs were too high once we get into that process. I really want to see a restaurant in here as soon as we can. And if we so I, I guess that's my point. I really want to see a restaurant that has a solid plan, that's ready to go forward. And the costs are pretty solid for us to understand and make that decision if we're only going to look at the numbers. So, yeah, my question was answered. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else here before we, Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, I, again, I appreciate all the presentations that have been given over the last couple of meetings. I'm going to go ahead and speak in favor of Chavalitas. I feel like the, the presentation has been very professional. I think a lot of the questions that were brought up in the previous meeting, including adjusting the cuisine to, to meet the, the demands of, of our particular situation, I feel like they are further along in the process of you know, hitting the ground running. So I would speak in favor of Chavalitas.
Okay, great. I think we've heard from everybody here, we've heard from Councilmember Kurtz, and thank you for Councilmember Cargill for your patience. Do we have any other questions for our restaurateurs before we keep moving here? All right, Chris, are you still with us?
Madam Mayor, he is not on. He did put something in the chat. I don't know if you were able to see that, but his comment was that I would ask this be delayed to the next meeting to give full council a chance to discuss and for Saranac to refine their plan.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you for everybody's patience, trying to move forward with that building and do something over the years. You know, the city made a commitment to do some of that 54 acres, and I think we have really stepped up to the plate to try to do something. Even though personally I feel for the government, we shouldn't be in the restaurant business of leasing on it. Government is terrible at that. So sitting here, now that I've missed something, I'm giving three presentations, and I don't know who these are. Having said that, I don't know that. Now, earlier, I was not privy to the information that the attorney said this wouldn't be any type of a conflict, that we didn't have to speak about this in executive session. I wish I would have known that because then I wouldn't have brought that up on it. The, one of the concerns that I have equally to the dollar amount being an executive fund is this. We're a city that thrives on our retail. That is our blood that goes through our veins. The property taxes, yes, but that doesn't keep us going. It's the property, it's the sales of there. So from a business owner of my, all my adult life, I have to also look at, if I was coming into Liberty Lake, and I'm in the restaurant business, I'm in any business. If I suddenly realize that the city is using taxpayers' money to build a building and subsidize to some degree, subsidize my competition, why would I want to do business with Liberty Lake? That's what I want the council to think about. That's what I want the business owners to think about. Because they're going to look at this and go, oh, I think that's great, if they're being, being treated the same way that they have to be treated when it comes to what their rental space is, if they're triple net, how that pencils out after 10 years, what, what's their true cost going to be? Because the property owner builds that into a monthly lease. Okay, that's their bloodline. Okay, so I really caution the council and say, we're going to make a decision here. We're going to do something on it. But it has to be where it's not a nickel less than the other business owner coming to this town would want to do business. Thank you.
All right, so.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to postpone the decision on this until we've had a chance to see the concept from Saranac and also get some more firm, firm numbers on the development.
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Kurtz. All right, for a discussion on the motion. Not hearing any. All right, all in favor of postponing the the decision on who to bring back a contract for till the next meeting? the decision on who to bring back a contract for till the next meeting? Um, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have three and we're down to five council members. Let's make a note of that. Um, so three in favor and those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I'm waiting. Is it Councilmember Kurtz? Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz, yea or nay?
I originally said yea.
Okay, sorry. So we have four then? Okay. So I've just to make sure I've got it clear. I've got Councilmember Kenny, Kennedy Dunn, Spencer and Kurtz, um, in favor and Councilmember Ball opposed. All right. So it sounds like we'll continue the discussion next, next meeting, which is on the, what date? 19th?
19th.
19th, and we'll have a decision then of to who bring this back.
Can, can we get some clarification on, uh, Councilmember Spencer? When you say firm numbers, what, what does that mean?
As firm of numbers, it's that they can provide us, uh, because we heard some ambiguity on, on how much it was going to cost compared to the numbers that we have currently from the proposals.
And, and we will also get out, um, to the council who is, who is which on here? I think that's appropriate this time. Would you agree?
At this point, I would say that we would leave it in the same format. Um, but if we are firming up numbers, I, I, I just needed the clarification on what the intention was behind that definition of firm. We can work with that.
Yeah, because I'll, I'll just say that my assumption was that we were going to be sticking within those numbers. But then as, as the question came out that those numbers were not firm. So, but I'd like something more firm, something closer to reality. If, if those numbers are not reality.
Okay, Councilmember Kennedy?
I would hope my comments for stat would be, help to clarify also is that to see what the rating is in our city for each class of commercial. And what it rents for, for a new building, an old building, mid-center, whatever the case may be. Those are numbers that I don't recall ever seeing those, but those are numbers that we've given in the past when we were looking at renewing leases, uh, at that restaurant. So I think that, uh, I need that information to be able to go forward. I, I don't want to just hear from somebody to say, oh, this is fair.
And I, was that, okay. Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead. Thanks.
Along with Councilmember Spencer's, um, question about firm, I have the same ask. Um, and then if there are any, um, conceptual drawings that we can look at, um, that would be awesome if they exist, um, for each of the other, um, presenters that we have, just so that we can look at, look at everything, look at the costs that you guys have proposed. Um, and then I think, uh, we've gotten menus and everything. So that's helpful, but I think those things would help inform our decisions. So thank you for the presenters for, um, coming back again.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Uh, we will make sure we get this right. So, um, the next meeting is on the 19th and there'll be further council discussion and, um, Kyle and Mark will probably be working with with, with Ford Real Estate on it. So yeah, I know. I don't know why I keep spacing on that. It's not like I haven't met you before. It's Monday. I'll blame it on that. We're used to being here on Tuesday. Monday brain. So, okay, we will follow up. Thank you guys for all of your hard work. We're looking forward to the decision. Okay, climate engagement, um, plan workshop, Lisa.
Thanks, guys. And my sandwich last great week at Casey's was great, by the way.
Actually, I would like to introduce, uh, Suzie Goodbear with Parametrics. And I want to ask Evan to, um, promote her to a presenter, please.
For the plan, the climate engagement plan. Okay.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, we're up. Okay, hold on. Hold, hold on just a second. We've got two councilmembers. So, hold on, um.
Mayor, can I make a motion that we break for five minutes?
Okay, can, all right. So we'll, we'll do a, a stand at ease for five minutes. So we had two councilmembers walk out. Can you just give us a minute? Five minutes? Thanks. Just a five minutes. Okay, everybody. Uh, sorry about that, that unexpected break. Um, so we are rejoining and getting, and starting our discussion on the climate engagement plan workshop.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, my name is Suzie Godber. I work with Parametrics, who has been hired to help Liberty Lake develop the climate element for the comprehensive plan update. And we do have a completed climate engagement plan for your review, and I'm giving a brief overview discussion of that today for you. Um, I don't think I have control over this PowerPoint, so.
Say next slide, we'll get a change for you.
Fabulous. Thank you. Um, for those of you who are unfamiliar, um, so what is a climate element? The climate element is a new requirement passed by the Washington State Legislature, um, House Bill 1181. This now requires a climate element as part of the comprehensive plan updates. Um, this climate element is required and it is, um, required to qualify for different loan and grant programs, um, including public works board, drinking water, state revolving fund, clean water fund, et cetera. Um, next slide, please. So the climate element consists of two sub elements. One is a resiliency sub element. Um, that entails ensuring that places are resilient to potential environmental hazards. Um, for example, such as wildfire, um, hazardous smoke. This is a sub element that is required for all jurisdictions. And then there is a greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub element. Um, this is not required for all, all places, um, but it is required for Liberty Lake because they have population over 6,000. Um, next slide. So today we, um, we have completed the outreach and engagement plan. Uh, the purpose of engagement for the climate element is to make sure that the policies and goals that are developed in line with the resiliency and greenhouse gas reduction sub elements are in line with community priority, priorities as well as are feasible. And we want to make sure that we get out of it feedback from various different interested parties. Um, this is a new element. It has not been done before. So therefore it's really important that this element, just as all the other elements of the comprehensive plan, undergo an extensive public process. Um, and additionally, this is part of a, a grant deliverable, um, specifically meant to complement the climate element, but also to complement the rest of the, um, outreach and engagement strategies and plans for the rest of the comprehensive plan update. Next slide, please. So just to give a brief overview of what the strategy consists of, um, the strategy consists of overarching goals as well as purpose of engagement. Um, but also we identified four key audiences that we wanted to target with outreach. And each of those audiences have their own associated strategies. So first and foremost, we have Liberty Lake residents and surrounding communities. This includes residents, builder, building, business owners, property owners. Um, and the purpose of engagement with everyone is to make sure that people are informed and have an opportunity to comment on policies and goals. So strategies include tabling at community events, meeting people where they are, as well as providing online platforms such as online open houses, surveys and story maps. Um, the next key audience are implementation pro, partners. We see this as local and regional agencies that have the ability to implement or have existing programs that support the goals and actions that are being proposed. And we intend on having six different workshops with these different, um, implementation partners. Next, we have community representatives and leaders. Um, these are community representatives that represent the interests of larger community groups. Um, we see this as being potentially, uh, senior citizens, youth groups, um, also potentially sensitive populations. And we tend to have one-on-one interviews with those folks. And then lastly, we see, um, city council and commissions as our last key audience. And strategies here are presentations and meetings and to make sure that council is well informed on the progress of the climate element. Next slide. So here is the overarching process, uh, for the climate element. So we have the GHG emissions sub element, which starts with a inventory, which we have completed. Um, and then the resiliency sub element, which starts with existing, um, assessing impacts and reviewing existing plans. And you will see at the bottom that engagement is throughout the entire process, but I left a star on establishing goals and policies because really when we are seeking input from the community, this is, this is the most important piece that we need input on is what, what kinds of policies and actions resonate with the community and make sure that we are, um, safeguarding community health and welfare as well as meeting community needs. Next slide, please. Um, so upon, uh, the approval and adoption of the, um, public engagement plan, the next step in regards to engagement will be forming a climate policy advisory team, which, um, Liberty Lake team is actively recruiting. This will entail of a group of residents, um, who will be involved with the climate element of the comprehensive plan update and act as community representatives, uh, to make sure that the established goals and policies are in line with, um, community priorities. And that concludes the, um, climate element workshop.
That's pretty good. Does anybody have any questions? The start of a long process. Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Um, I appreciate the outreach part and I really appreciate these, uh, specifically star asserted over goals. Um, I believe it's really the community's objective to deliver, um, assess, to identify, uh, what we think the goals, uh, for our community can be. So, um, um, I think the advisory team formation is another excellent move. Um, and I think that a great moment of leadership opportunity, not only for, um, residents and I call it all the stakeholders, uh, but also including the youth of our community. Uh, I think they are amongst all the stakeholders that, um, really hold the most in the long term of what we're dealing with. So, um, I'm grateful for the effort and I'm, I think we're starting the right track.
I think, I think Councilmember Kurtz. Nope. Lisa has something. Okay. I saw your hand. I'm like, I don't know whose hand you're representing, but thank you. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, i- if I may, so, um, later in the agenda, you will be looking at, um, the climate engagement plan and passing a resolution hopefully to adopt that. It is intended to be a living document, just as the other engagement plan that encompasses the entire comprehensive plan is. But this particular element is so new that we feel like it warrants a, an additional level of intentionality in the engagement of our citizens. And, um, it is a requirement of our, our, um, climate resiliency grant. And so, um, this is kind of our next step. We will, as a living document, we will kind of adjust and, um, adapt as we go through this to, to figure out what is most effective. But, um, I think this is a good foundation for us to begin with. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Does anybody else have, Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think this is going the right direction. I'm very comfortable with that. One of the things I noticed though is that it's mentioned that community engagement would be involved in this. I also noticed that the planning commission is involved in this. And then of course, we're forming another committee. So it seems like we have three committees looking at the same thing. Now, if we move forward thinking there's that, that's not going to be effective. Maybe we can deal with, with two. There, therefore we're going to move ahead with three. My recommendation would be is that whoever we're going to assign to this to look at this, they're not on the planning commission? And they're not on the community engagement. We have great volunteers in this city, but we also have a lot of duplication.
Yep.
But they're in other organizations and it's difficult to sometimes weed through that.
Yeah.
So moving forward, I hope that we do have that distinction.
Yeah. So we will be taking applications from the public, um, for this temporary subcommittee, and that's one of, one of my goals.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Ball?
Well, it's more of a technical question. How do you, how do they go about, um, maybe Lisa knows, maybe Suzie knows, measuring greenhouse gas?
Yeah, um, I can answer that question for you. So we follow a global protocol called GCP, which I would be happy to share with you. Um, it gives protocol for how you measure sector-based emissions. So for a sector-based emissions assessment, you measure, um, building energy, transportation, industrial processes and project, product use, which includes, um, the use of refrigerants, um, waste and wastewater. And AFLU, which is agriculture, forest and land use. So the protocol gives a very long list of data resources that you can gather. So for example, we gather, um, data directly from energy companies for building energy and we use emission factors that um, are provided by most utility companies, um, both market-based and location-based. So, um, there's a very, very long protocol that is very detailed of the different kinds of options that you can use to, um, measure emissions. But I would be more than happy to share that with you. And I believe we do have the report that has a full list of our, um, data and resources and emissions factors that we use to measure.
So you take a lot of it then from, um, what their utility, uh, costs are, you know, what they're, what they're using, right?
Yeah. So use, so for example, for, um, building energy, we would get, um, yeah, use information. So electricity use and natural gas use directly from the utility. Um, for transportation emissions, uh, we find data such as like gallons sold throughout the jurisdiction or the geographic boundaries. So essentially we're assuming that the gallons sold are gallons that are used, um, both for gasoline, diesel, um, renewable diesel, which is a little bit more popular in Washington as well. Um, there's other kinds of resources. So for, you know, industrial product use, um, and refrigerants, there are other kinds of national reporting structures such as EPA flight, where you can find that data of, um, heavy industrials in an area. To name a few.
Okay.
And if I can, if I can jump in, um, just to give a context, um, this greenhouse gas emission baseline that we're establishing is important from a goal-setting perspective and from an implementation perspective. So in five years, we're going to have to go back and look at how are we doing on implementation? We'll use the exact same methodology. The methodology is not necessarily perfect, but as long as we're consistent in our methodology, we can then measure our progress as we look at the opportunities for greenhouse gas reductions.
All right. Anybody else here for, or Councilmember Kurtz, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Spencer?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Lisa, uh, when, if, if we, if, since this is tied with the resolution we're going to be talking about, my, my question is, uh, because it mentions here with the council's adoption, the city will seek reimbursement for com, from commerce for this first major deliverable. So my first question, um, has to do with, uh, subsequent major deliverables. Are those going to be, uh, subject to reimbursement from commerce? Or are we looking at another unfunded mandate?
No. So this is, this is most definitely a funded mandate. Um, Commerce has given us $400,000 spread over to Biennium to complete this task. And, um, this is one of the defined deliverables. Our repayment of, or our reimbursement of that grant is based upon deliverables. So it's not necessarily costs incurred, but in terms of actually delivering on those key points in the process that we, uh, need to complete the requirements of this, uh, climate grant.
Okay. And you're, and you're confident we can meet these deliverables so we can get full reimbursement?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right. Okay. No, there's no further questions. We'll move on to the social media workshop. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Kurtz. Should, I don't think this will go very long.
This should be the shortest thing on the agenda, I hope. Um, so what I wanted to have this on the agenda for was to see who would be willing to be a part of a subgroup, um, to really work through the details of the social media, um, and the ethics policy together and get this over the finish line because it's been on our, um, action item list for the last, I think, three years. So I guess what I'm looking for is somebody to work with me. So I guess what I'm looking for is somebody to work with me, um, I'm willing to volunteer, um, to redline, go through, really get, um, a really good working copy and then bring it back to the full council to go through, um, as a group. Um, but someone who wants to do that detailed weedy work. Um, and then my goal, um, which is negotiable, um, would be to have this back to the council to do that other work back, um, before you guys in January, once we get through the rest of the year. So that's my ask and wondering if anybody would like to do that work.
Pick me, pick me.
Who's that? Member Dunn.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn. Okay.
Yeah, and the fun part is, it's almost like I heard, if we had a committee. Did I say committee? Yeah, no, I'm in. Let's do this.
Okay. Um, and Madam Mayor, it didn't really make it on the agenda, but is there anybody who's willing to work on the rules of procedure? Or do you want me to have that on a different agenda item for a workshop for sort of the same ask?
Yeah, they, they, they're together but separate, so I would hate to overburden, um, a couple people with all of that, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm asking for like a different group of volunteers for that one. Is that okay to ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, anybody want to do the same kind of weedy nerdy work, um, on the rules of procedure?
Are, are, are you proposing that you won't be on there anymore?
No, this, not ordinances. This is the council.
Oh, procedure, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, question, Annie, are you looking for just one other individual or do you want to get three on that?
Uh, I want to get people that, uh, will move through things fairly quickly, probably mostly electronically, um, back and forth, and then maybe some Zoom meetings if we need them. Um, but just kind of detailed work on, um, the, yeah, the rules of procedure.
Yeah, I would recommend that you get a third individual, uh, that won't be me. But a third individual for the simple reason, if you're going to hold a meeting, if one of them, if there's only two, one can't show up, then you don't have a meeting. So if you have three and one can't show up, at least two of you can still do the work.
Oh, yeah, like it would be a mutually agreeable meeting. Like, I think we could do a lot of the work just back and forth by email, um, versus having a meeting. So it doesn't have to be Dan if Dan only wants to do the social media one, but if there's anybody that would be interested in doing the rules of procedure, um, let me know. Anybody?
I just have a question. What, what happened with the ordinance committee? Are they?
Or, or we, we've had a pause. Um, we're trying to get back, step back on schedule.
And I think we'll, we can still do that, but we know we need to do this. It's been on the agenda for a while, so, um, yeah, we're, we're going to need to get to it. And I, I don't even know what ordinance number these are, but what will happen is when we get to it, we'll say we need to go through it. So, yeah.
So isn't it policies and procedures that we talked about before, or is it, is it rules and procedure?
Rules of procedure.
There, there's a document called Council Rules of Procedure. That's what she's talking about. I'm not seeing any volunteers unless Linda, you want to?
I would, I would volunteer.
Okay. Councilmember Kennedy?
What I was going to say was I'd rather be on the social media one, but he jumped on it before.
Well, I think you're still looking for a third, right, Councilmember Kurtz?
I'm looking for anybody who's willing to do it. I don't want to make it too big of a group where it becomes this unwieldy. We've got.
You can't have four.
Make it three? Yeah.
Yeah, which one's social media?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I.
Can we add Linda to your social media list group?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
New blood.
And then was anybody in on rules and procedure?
Um, got Councilmember Kennedy. I don't have anybody else.
I can do that one.
Okay, got Councilmember Spencer.
Okay, perfect.
Woo.
Alright, so I will, um, I'll get something out to you guys, the different groups, um, this week. Um, and we can start working together and, and hopefully, um, and as the timeline goes on, if it is, if it's not looking like it's going to happen like my plan was, then we'll adjust based on, on how we can work with budget and everything else we have going on. So, thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to compliment, Councilman Kurtz on, you're right, that's the shortest one we've had. I must admit, when I looked at the agenda tonight, that was the one that I was going, oh.
No. Yeah.
This could be an endurance, so thank you for. I was prepared to make a motion that we postpone it to another meeting. We have so much left on here. Thank you for the shortness of it.
Alright, okay, um, so up to general business. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I moved.
Alright, we have a motion to.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Spencer and Dunn. Alright, um, all in favor of approving general business items A through J? Please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, motion passes five zero. Woo, that was the shortness. Alright, on to general business action items. First up, we have the amended restated solid waste collection agreement. Do we want to go ahead and do, um, short discussion before we have a motion? Mark?
We don't have any planned discussion.
Oh, okay. Alright, I'm sure there's questions. So do we have a motion and a second to move forward for discussion? Councilmember Dunn?
Uh, I move that we approve the amended and restated solid waste collection agreement between the City of Liberty Lake and Waste Management.
Second. You have a second by Councilmember Kennedy. Do we have any questions, um, on this item? Going once, going twice. Alright, all those in favor of approving action item A, the amended and restated solid waste co- waste collection agreement? Please say aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Alright, motion passes five zero. Next, uh, up the renewal of executive agreement for onsite IT support.
I move to approve.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Spencer, second by Councilmember Dunn. Any questions on this?
Yes.
Right, go ahead, Matt. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll only move forward if Evan can fix my phone. And the computer. This is, I'm digging my heels in on this one.
Okay, got it. Got it.
I wanted that on tape.
Okay, that, that, that'll, that'll be a deliverable. Alright. Okay, all in favor of, of approving the renewal of execu tech agreement for onsite IT support, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, motion passes five zero. Alright, council comments. Do we have anything additional from the council for tonight? Councilmember Dunn?
Um, I just really would like to state clearly that, um, any council discussions involving real estate and specifically the opportunity to increase or decrease the price of that real estate is outlined as allowable in like executive session. And, uh, I believe that it's critical, actually, that this council be able to deliberate, um, the restaurant actions into executive session.
So that was, that was the reason I had the disclaimer at the front about not these not being negotiable, but if we do have further information, we will do that in executive session.
Thank you for that.
Okay, any other council comments? Not hearing any. We don't have any public hearings or appeals. We do have two resolutions. Kyle, resolution twenty-four two six eight.
A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake adopting the public engagement plan for the climate element of the twenty-twenty-six periodic comprehensive plan update.
We have motion to approve.
Uh, I move to approve twenty-four two sixty-eight.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Ball. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Lisa, for both the public meeting and also the virtual online meeting. Uh, I can't think that we've ever had a kickoff of account plan change, including such outreach. So it's big and important. I recognize that, but well done.
Alright, alright, any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor of approving resolution twenty-four dash two six eight, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, motion passes five zero. Twenty-four two six nine.
A resolution providing for disposal of certain inventory items, uh, deemed to be surplus to the reasonable foreseeable, uh, reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
Leave the motion.
I move the resolution twenty-four two sixty-nine.
Right.
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Kennedy. Any questions on this one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Where, where did we sell that to? Who buys that stuff?
Kyle?
Uh, we have, uh, so we, we have a, an agreement with a vendor, uh, out of Post Falls that does this. So we had one, I believe, in the valley that ceased operations last year. Uh, so we moved those to an auction house in Post Falls, I believe.
Because every one of them is a treasure. Every one is a treasure.
Small valuable items.
It's hard to believe we're getting.
Small attractive items, yeah. Don't you remember, Mike? I thought we just, we had a garage sale in the parking lot here, you know?
Well, we do need money.
Be kind of fun.
Alright, uh, those in favor of approving resolution twenty-four dash two six nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes five zero. Um, we have first read ordinance.
Uh, ordinance number three oh six, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, levying the regular property taxes for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington in Spokane County for the year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-five, to provide revenue for the provision of city services as set forth in the city budget.
Alright, so this is a first read, no, no discussion. So we'll continue to have this discussion during the next budget meeting, and this will come up at a subsequent meeting for second read. Alright, we have. No, because it's first read, no. Um, no emergency ordinances, upcoming, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Uh, we've got a few things on here. We're looking for some council directions, so, um, the first two, obviously, we talked about with Councilmember Kurtz, so we're looking at first of the year for rules, procedure and social media. Um, we're targeting February for emergency housing code amendment, uh, master facilities plan TV for March, and commission appointment process keeps moving out. And I, Chris, Chris says he was going to follow up on that, but he, but, um, I'll follow up with him again. I think it's kind of fallen down his priority list as well. So the other three on here that don't really have a target date are the Transparency Act, and we'll, we'll, um, get with Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Cargo on that. Um, Councilmember Kurtz, you had a question there about length of meetings. Do you want to tie that into the rules of procedure?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we can have that discussion definitely when, um, we make some suggestions on what that might be. Um, but I, I guess, um, I don't know if I want to wait that long. Um, so I, it seems like maybe it would be informative to guide the writing of the rules of procedure, if that makes sense. Um, so maybe we could have it sometime in November. We're in November, holy cow. Um, sometime between now and the end of the year.
Alright, we'll put before end of year and we'll, we'll see where we can slide that in. Alright, and then we have the, and I wasn't here, but I'm familiar with the topic as I've talked with, uh, um, Mr. Clay as well. Um, I know he spoke about the secondhand smoke, so Councilmember Spencer, you'd asked about that. What are you looking at?
Well, I, I guess mostly I'm wondering, um, I'm assuming Sean, uh, has available the documents that Mr. Clay has been sending in to us.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just, I, I guess I'm looking for feedback as to whether, uh, he believes there's, uh, a feasible way that we can work that in, uh, to our, our code under nuisance or something to that effect to, to give, uh, this, the citizens some reprieve.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm not going to speak for the city attorney. He, he can cover this when he gets back, but we've had a discussion and we, and during the discussion, he agreed with our analysis. We, we are not recommending that we change the chronic nuisance code to include, uh, the items that were proposed to be included, because essentially you're taking acts that are not criminal and making them criminal and adding them to a list of patently criminal activities like prostitution and assault and drug use and distribution of drug paraphernalia. Um, and we would be adding to that someone barbecuing in their backyard, so we are not recommending that. There may be another way to approach it where we can provide some, uh, relief. And those options, we are researching right now and are looking into possibilities.
Yeah, I, I think mostly we're just looking for some place that we can put it. And, and I, I would note that he did say that barbecue smoke would not be included in that.
Well, by definition would have to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, I think he was calling out specifically marijuana, marijuana smoke, but.
And cigarette smoke, but.
Cigarette smoke. Yeah, anyhow.
Councilmember Ball?
Um, comment on that. Um, has it occurred to, um, Clay, is that his name?
David.
David Clay? To discuss it with his neighbor?
Yes, he already has tried.
Extensively.
Yes.
Interesting.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, uh, look for Sean's feedback.
Yeah.
For putting a date on that. Okay, is there anything else? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yes, I, I, I would propose one thing, and, and what I would like to do is ask to have this on our next November nineteenth meeting. We've had so much discussion, anything around the community, the center of the library. I don't want to lose whatever op, whatever speed we have going there. So I would like to put it on a workshop possibly that we talk specifically on community center, library options. And I have some things that I would report at that time. But I do request it be on the nineteenth.
Okay, well, um, we'll have our agenda review and, because I know we've got some hot city business that we're trying to get done for the end of the year, but we will see, do what we can to get that on there. Okay, um, citizens and comments. Do we have anybody here in chambers or online who'd like to make a citizen comment? I don't see any in here. Uh, do we have anybody online who'd like to make a citizen comment? Before we wrap up. If so, please send our meeting host a note in the chat feature. Going once. Going twice. Alright, no citizens and comments. We have no executive session, so if there's no further business before the council, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, everybody.